Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Hunt, call the September 14th, 2021 council study session to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. I will also share a summary of comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Council Deputy President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. The first item on our agenda is public comments. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on a phone, press star three. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And I will wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening? Okay, so I will read some guidelines about public comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit comments to five minutes, and please re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. See Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Cyrus Crone. Cyrus, in just a moment, I'll move you up as a panelist so that you can unmute yourself and may also choose to turn your video on. And please let us know if you'd like to make your comments at this time or if you'd like to wait until after the agenda item that you wish to speak to.
Test, test. Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I was originally going to just talk about the pool, but since I have four and a half minutes, there are a couple other things I wanted to mention. And as council is aware, I'm not bashful about expressing my thoughts. And I wanted to compliment council and amend one of my grievances from probably about a year and a half ago. As many of you will recall, I was distraught over the exorbitant amount of money being spent on some of the work being done on Gilman Boulevard. The crosswalk that has since been created there is quite nice. It does a great job of moving pedestrians. It's helpful to cyclists. And I commend those that were involved in that work because it was, I think, a demonstrable improvement to what was there. So kudos to all of you. To the pool. I'm a huge fan. I use it regularly. As some of you know, I'm currently training for an endurance event, and I have been in there at 6:30 a.m. sharp every morning without fail. And I went up there the other day thinking that that week-long period had been completed only to find the day, and then I learned about it through reading through the material. I've met a number of people at the pool. I try to get my kids registered to participate in swim lessons, but it's almost impossible because if you're not on the keyboard within 30 seconds after the lessons open, you're out of luck because they fill up so quickly. It's harder than getting to a Dead and Company concert these days. And it's clear that the pool is, you know, very popular, as you know. So I hope that whatever can be done as an interim solution, we can explore. And I know that a part is going to have to be manufactured for that. But I hope that if there's any way to expedite the temporary approach, maybe with a part-time pump that we can borrow or rent. There's so many people that utilize that of all shapes and sizes, and you name it. It's just, it's an awesome facility. When I'm there in the morning, there are people in there doing rehabilitation. And I can tell you that the Bellevue Pool pales in comparison to the Issaquah Pool. I'm now having to go over to Mercer Island, which, you know, isn't good for the environment using those emissions. So anything that we can do to get our pool up and running a little bit faster, I would appreciate. While I'm on the topic of my exercising, one of the things that I've observed through jogging and cycling through pretty much every square inch of Issaquah the last six months is how concerned I am about some of the more, maybe mundane, but easier things that we can do to help support our local environment. I know that we've got a lot of lofty goals, some of which may be duplicative with what the state has already proposed. I'm not here to debate that. I'm here to present what I observe when I'm out and about around town. And I've written, I've written letters to council about this before, but the trash that is piling up near waterways, near sensitive areas, homeless living in sensitive areas, I just, for the first time a couple of days ago, witnessed that on the SR 900 off-ramp from I-90, somebody has put gravel down to make it easier to access a homeless encampment right in a sensitive area. And I don't know if the city did that or somebody found the material to create an ease of access to that, but that was discouraging. And, you know, I'd be happy to plot this out on a map. I'd be happy to get my neighbors to go out and do cleanup days. But I think as the city's putting more and more energy around protecting the environment, maybe we could address some of the more, you know, basic aspects of this, which is making sure that Lake Samamish and all of the access points to that are cleaned up to prevent all of that from getting into the salmon habitat. But it's not insignificant. My concerns that were presented previously found their way to Department of Transportation. Somebody went in there and did a great job cleaning up all that area. And so thank you for that. I think I'm out of time, but I love the pool. I hope we can get it reopened. And thank you for everything you do. Have a great evening, and I'll put myself on mute and go away.
Thank you. Clerk Geezer, has anyone else indicated a desire to speak?
I don't see that anyone else has indicated a desire to speak at this point.
Okay, thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And I will also take a moment to summarize email comments that we've received that specifically reference items on tonight's study session agenda. This is something that we've been doing during virtual meetings. Regarding ID 0907, which is the Title 18 Land Use Code update, we received many emails, several of them this afternoon. I believe it's around eight, or I believe it's eight as of this afternoon. And many of them reference the environmental sections of Title 18, which are discussed in our packet this evening. For example, we received an email that provided a case study of how Issaquah could still grow and develop, but not at the expensive critical areas. We also received an email that wrote about previous growth being accomplished at the expense of the environments and that today's Issaquah residents are asking for responsible growth and rebirth, but not at the expense of the environments. That was the theme in several of the comments. We received comments on the importance of landscape and irrigation longevity and the need for incorporating the maintenance into the planning for landscaping. We received question on tree canopy and also questions and concerns about exceptions to the steep slope buffer part of the code, asking why we would consider allowing exceptions to those steep slope buffers. We also heard about citizen engagement. Several emails were positive in terms of thankful of the amount of citizen engagement that is going into the Title 18 Land Use Code update. Also concerns about wildfire and canopy, and concern about invasive species. And then lastly, appreciate the commitment to the natural environment, but was unclear on the prioritization that was presented and whether or not that would both allow us to stay on the timeline while also achieving the stated goals and objectives. So that was a summary of some of the emails that we've received on tonight's agenda item, ID 0907, Title 18 Land Use Code update. With that, I will now move on to the first item of business this evening, which is ID 0958, full update and planning. And this will be presented by Director Watling.
Thank you so much, Council President Hunt. Good evening, council. Yeah, I'm here to provide two updates related to the city-owned Julius Bone Pool. Certainly, given the full study session agenda tonight, I'm going to make every effort to be concise and efficient in these updates and certainly save some room for any questions or feedback you want to provide. Clerk Geezer, I believe, was going to share her screen. That's great. Thanks, Tisha. Next slide. So yeah, these two updates I want to provide. First off, given the emergency repair situation we have going on at the pool, I wanted to give an update on that. And then secondly, update you on some conversations we've been having with the Issaquah School District and some grant opportunities we may want to pursue here in the coming months. So next slide to the emergency repairs. As I shared with you in an email during the week of August 30th, so that last week in August, Facilities Team annually does maintenance work and really does a pretty thorough assessment of the pool, the pool systems, the pump systems, et cetera. During that work, it was discovered we had a pretty dire situation within our pump. The impeller, which is, think of a propeller within the pump system that moves the water through it, was at near catastrophic failure. Thankfully, we discovered it before it became a bigger pump system issue. Unfortunately, in discovering it, and given the supply chain delays we're seeing pretty much in every industry, what was a pretty typical turnaround time of a week or two for fabrication of a new impeller, what we've been told by that manufacturer is to expect four to six weeks. That has led to, as Cyrus certainly pointed out, an unfortunate situation where a very, very popular pool is experiencing a delayed closure. In that work, and as we've already ordered that impeller pump, we do continue to pursue some interim solutions, both in trying to seek an industrial-sized pump that has the ability to connect to our system readily and easily without excessive capital cost. That continues to be pursued. The Facilities Team is doing a great job running down a number of, and working frequently with a number of industrial-sized companies that rent pumps. We've also been working very, very closely with the fabricator themselves, working closely and collaborating, coordinating on the engineering work there. We've recently heard some news from them that is encouraging, that combined with really beginning to dial up some expedited shipping, beginning to work up a plan for how we could sequence getting the pool back up. We could be receiving an impeller by the end of this month. And with some work done by the Facilities Team, could be looking at an earlier opening than when we anticipated, October 18th, and even to the point of by the end of this month. So Facilities Team has done a terrific job of continuing to work through this situation and seek either that alternative pump, or again, if the impeller fabrication is expedited quick enough to jump right to that. As we get specifics on either of these opportunities, we'll be sure to update you as well as our many, many users who enjoy that pool. The next update is taking a little longer view. Next slide, Tisha. So, beginning last year in 2020, and understanding Issaquah School District's planning around an anticipated fourth high school, we approached them and began asking them a series of questions in terms of what they were planning for, how they were planning to address the needs of those additional two swim teams, the boys' team and the girls' team. In those conversations, it was certainly expressed that they were anticipating and hoping to utilize the Bone Pool. We already have six teams, so the boys' and girls' teams from Issaquah High School, Liberty High School, and Skyline High School that use the Bone Pool as their competition pool, we certainly expressed to the school district just some concern in trying to add those two additional teams as well as accommodate really our balance in scheduling and in programming to address the community needs that, again, I think Cyrus so well expressed at a very, very popular pool that we operate with swim lessons that are constantly on wait lists. Lap swims are constantly in demand. So this work has led to a series of conversations with the district, and what it's produced is an interest by the district to further explore how we might create some partnered solutions, both with the district and the city, to increase pool capacity. And that's a pretty significant question with not a really simple answer, but we have a terrific situation in front of us right now with King County Levy that has an aquatic grant, an aquatic facility-specific grant program over the next four and a half years that they are just getting underway, that could give us the ability to do some feasibility work to explore how we might be able to increase pool capacity, whether there, at the Bone Pool, on-site, or another location. Next slide. What we would like to do, given these conversations and the openness from the school district, to explore sort of this long-range pool planning, we would like to submit a grant application here next month in the first phase of the King County Aquatic Facility Grants to do some feasibility work. This would be a grant that could be fully funded through the King County application. It would then allow us to hire a firm that specializes in aquatic facilities, do some work, some scoping work with the district, with the community, explore options, see if there is a partnered solution that makes sense. After completing that work in, ideally, the middle of 2022, we would then come back to you and have a discussion. See if there is an openness, if there's an opportunity for an actual capital project that we could pursue. The good news about the timing of this King County Grant Program is they're also offering capital grants. So by us applying for a feasibility study grant in this first phase, that would not preclude us from going back and doing a second application if we feel like there's a capital project that makes sense for both us, the community, and the school district to pursue. So with that opportunity, I guess, we are, I guess, we as staff and administration are recommending that we proceed with an application to do this feasibility work and do this exploratory, exploratory community outreach and work with the school district. And with that, I'm open to any questions or feedback you might have on either of those updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Watling. We do have several council members who have questions. The first one is Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt, Chris Ray. Jeff, what would be the city's share of the feasibility study? Or is it 100% grant-funded by the county grant?
That would be 100% funded by the county grant, no city share in the feasibility work.
Great. And then second follow-up question is, doing the grant request with the school district, is that, how does that affect our probability of receiving the grants?
For the feasibility work, it helps. For if this becomes a capital facility grant, it would be advantageous to present that as two public agencies partnering. We'd probably also seek some of the other swim clubs in partnering opportunities there. But that is just what this King County Grant Program is looking for, is partnered efforts.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Director Watling, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. And I'll have some comments around kind of the long-range planning later on after we take public comment, but I had a quick question about the pump system. And if, because you were talking a little bit about supply chains are making it a little bit more difficult for here to get here at the time that we would have expected, and we should expect now four to six weeks, but it could be sooner. It's really hard to tell. So my question is...
Councilmember Hall? Your audio is struggling.
Do we have any idea of how long it would take to move forward with this interim solution? Turning off my, you know, can you hear me?
Yeah, but we lost you there for the mid-section of your comments.
All right, I'll try this again. I was just curious, the rental for the industrial-sized pump?
Councilmember Hall, we're having the same problem as before.
As an interim solution. Do we know how long that would take?
I think what I hear you asking is that if there's availability to rent an industrial-sized pump, what would the timing of that be? It's not a matter of, I think, as we're exploring that option, it's more a matter of finding a right-size pump with the right-size connections. We have not been able to find that yet. Should one be available, we at least want to keep that as an option as we're also getting a sense of how quick this turnaround on the fabrication effort is. Thankfully, the supply chain issue with the fabrication is really just to the fabricator. The fabricator has such a backup and a backlog of work that that's what's creating the schedule issue there. Once we know when that impeller is fabricated, we're going to expedite shipping and get it moving forward. So if that meets a tight enough timeline, we're going to just proceed with that option, given how difficult it's been to try and find an industrial-sized pump. So we're trying to keep both options open. Again, I don't mean to sound vague, but we've gotten some optimistic news today from the fabricator, which might mean us being able to reopen by the end of this month. As we get clarity on those dates, we will continue to keep the community informed and updated.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the connection issues.
Thank you again, Director Watling. I do not see any other questions at this time. So at this time, I will call for public comments on this item and check in with Clerk Geezer. Do we have anyone who has signed up or desire to comment on this topic?
We didn't have anyone sign up to speak specifically, but I will just give everyone who's here an opportunity to indicate if you'd like to make comments. So that can be raising your virtual hand. You can likely do that by selecting the participant panel, finding the hand icon, or you can send me the host a chat message. Quickly monitoring here. And I don't see that anyone has indicated a desire to speak at this time.
Thank you, Clerk Geezer. Then we will move to council discussion and comments. Does anyone wish to give feedback on this item? Start with Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'll be very brief. Jeff, go for it. And I think that Cyrus laid out great examples of how that pool is being loved to pieces. So, and I'm really glad that you've taken a forward-looking approach in our working with the school districts. So it sounds like a great project to embark on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. We have several other council members. First is Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Real supportive of taking the first step and looking at the feasibility of a capital project involving the school, or the pool, and also very supportive of doing it in conjunction with the school district and seeing how we can meet the needs of the school district in the long term and at the same time provide this very important facility to the people who live in Issaquah.
Thank you. And Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Martz.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodman, here. I agree with the comments so far. Very excited, very timely, a great opportunity here potentially. So I'm supportive of what Director Watling seeks to do in terms of first steps. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I'm also supportive. However, I do remember this is not our first emergency pool repairs. I don't remember the year, but Diane Marcot was our Director of Finance. So it was more than a few years ago. And so I do would like to see at a later date a conversation about, it seems a bummer to get surprised twice in a decade on emergency repairs. I realize pools are full of, you know, chlorine and water is sort of by definition a good solvent, but, you know, twice in a decade on a major surprise on equipment of ours is more than I like. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other council members wishing to comment on this item. So I'll briefly summarize, but comments were very supportive of the approach being taken, the forward-looking and the planning aspects to the approach as well, and then wanting more information about how we, I think, how we can avoid this sort of emergency repair and maybe information about the history of that as well. Director Watling, do you have what you need from council in terms of comments?
I do. Thank you very much for that. And Councilmember Martz, yeah, as we do a post-incident report, that's some of the very things we're looking through is, what have we learned? very things we're looking through is what have we learned? What what's going on historically? And how do we, I think, build some necessary redundancies to key elements of the system? So we'll keep you posted on on both of these updates as well as that that report. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to the next item of business this evening, which is ID 0953 Boards and Commissions Stipendments. And this will be presented by Chief of Staff Tina Eggers. I believe you're on mute. Thank you for your patience. Let me share my screen here. All right. If there's confirmation that you can see the presentation, that'd be great. There is not a presentation. No presentation. All right. Well, let me try that one more time. Resume slideshow. Sorry for the delay. All right. It looks like I have a technical issue on my between my computer. So I'll just proceed. There is a copy of this online. It it just, it is not showing on our screen at all. It was showing in the slide view with the slides on the side, but now it's not showing at all. Just see, no. Right. So I'll proceed. This is in your packet. My apologies again. So thank you. There's four areas that that we are looking for feedback this evening. One of those is terms of what a program might look like on a stipend. One is the amount. When you might want the effective date. And the other is when this would return to council for your ultimate adoption. You first heard, and thank you, I see the clerk is helping me out here. Appreciate that. And if you can move to slide background, that would be perfect. Great teamwork. Okay, so you first heard about the program from the Human Service Commission. And this was part of their recommendation for creating a new equity board. You weighed in earlier this year and you asked us to bring back a proposal that could be offered across all our boards and commissions. Next slide. Thank you. We are looking for four, and again, my apologies, my computer is acting up, so I'm losing all my space in my windows, but I'll just wing it from this point forward. So the proposal consists of basically four elements. We'd like to provide an opt in program. We looked at offering $50 per meeting as a stipend. We didn't want to put a cap on there. So depending on the number of meetings that one may have in a year, it could be six meetings, it could be 12, it could be 24 if they're meeting twice a month or have special meetings. We looked at a number from a AMI perspective. And it's the same item that that we use for for some of our other programs like housing, utilities, and some of our rental programs. In this case, we did present 100% of the AMI as a proposal. And you could certainly look at providing a different number if you felt comfortable with that. We thought, you know, what percentage might participate and what a budget may include? So we added 25,000 into our budget for a placeholder for this pilot program. And if you look to provide incentives that either increased or decreased that, I have numbers and recommendations that would help shape a different budget. Next slide. All right. So as we implement a program, there would be two categories. One would be the participants' involvement and what would be expected on their part. So we would want some controls in place, some sort of attestation from the participant. We'd be looking for a W9. This is important so that they can become a payee in our financial system. And then the other element is at some point, depending on the frequency by which we would be issuing the checks, we would want a payment request form submitted from the participant. On the staff side, we would want to, of course, ensure that we're safeguarding personal information like the W9s. We would want to have some sort of auditing or verification. And we could do that in several ways. Ultimately, we would want to ensure that they were verified against minutes. And if appropriate, depending on the threshold that was paid, our finance department would need to issue 1099. Next slide. So if you are supportive of this program, or depending on how it's shaped, we could come back at the October 4th meeting. We could start enrollment, but we'd like to do it in alignment with the equity board that's underway. And what we would do is start with an enrollment period. And then those that were participating this year would actually be paid out in January. And again, your budget has a placeholder for for dollars that would help support that. And ultimately, we would want to be monitoring and reporting back to you on, you know, what's the volume of participants? Is this the right level of support? And do you need to make any increases or decreases as you consider supporting the program in the future? And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. Great, thank you. Councilmembers have questions, please indicate in the chat. And I see that the first question is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Thanks, Tina, for the presentation and the thoughtful work on all of this. So just to clarify, if there was 100% usage by all 125 or so members and they were meeting two times a month, that would be $125,000. So the $25,000 budget for the pilot program, I see in the notes, was based on 20% using this because they opt in and because their incomes are below. So what would be, since it could be higher than that, would the anticipation be that if you started to see enrollment numbers up to a certain point, you would then come back to us and say, hey, this is what we're seeing and here's what we would anticipate needing as additional budget?
Yes, we could come back and provide a budget amendment if one was needed. And we, of course, would would probably, depending on the number of participants, have a good idea of well in advance if we would be approaching that.
Okay, thank you.
Question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Tina, that's great work. How do we measure success? How do we know that we're actually getting a broader base of people engaging in boards and commissions because of the stipend?
Good question. I think equity board, it hasn't been something that in my role as clerk, a former clerk in recruiting for boards and commissions, that that I heard in interest or in ask for. I think things are changing. And I think as we are trying to hope for reaching different groups, that this could be an incentive. The equity board could certainly have some feedback for us. We might want to ask some questions, survey the group as if if we can. I'm sorry, I'm not hearing. Have I gone offline? Okay. Council Deputy President Ray, did you have a second or follow up to your question?
Thank you. Thank you for your forbearance. I was having some technical problems. My my monitor went completely blank. And so I couldn't click the unmute button. No, I would, but I would like you to give that that question some thought before, some additional thought before we come back. Devona, I'd like to have something lined up where we we have an idea what we're, how we're going to establish the the efficacy of the of the program. And that would be really helpful for me. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. I have a quick question. And it is around some of the comments that you just made. So I I believe that the suggestion of a stipend for the equity board came out of the work of the Human Services Commission. So that that was where this idea originated and wanted to confirm that.
Correct.
Thanks. Great. I do not see any other questions at this time. So at this point, we will move to public comments and I will check in with Clerk Geezer if anyone has either signed up or if you would call to see if anybody would indicate a desire to speak on this topic.
Yes, no one signed up to speak on this topic specifically. But again, for those in the virtual audience, if you would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand by selecting the small hand icon or send me the host a chat message and I'll monitor this for a moment. All right. And I'm not seeing anyone indicate a desire to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move to discussion and direction from council. Chief of Staff Eggers, if you could put up the questions that you want, I think that could be helpful. And I do see that we have council members wishing to comment. So the first council member is Councilmember March.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very, very, very much in favor of this. I think we should offer it not just to the equity board, but across our commissions and boards. I think that a lot of what we've heard about equity and about privilege in the last year and a half relates back to or can be related back to economic privilege. And one of the privileges is that some of us, it's easier to take Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday night and join council. I, as most of you know, or some of you know, my mom ran a record store when I was growing up, which was very, very cool, but didn't didn't make any more money then than it makes now, I think. And so, you know, she wasn't able to get involved in community issues because she was working 60 hours a week. And, you know, I think that is vitally important when we talk about transparency and engagement in the community, that we make sure that we get representation far and wide in our community. And I think this will be, this will help in that regard. I think Councilmember Ray is right to ask, how are we going to measure it and understand it and make sure that it's going to have the impact that we hope it does? But I'm excited about this conversation and excited about moving forward with the administration's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing any other, oh, Councilmember De Michelle.
Let me unmute myself. Thank you. I'm looking on a different screen at the four parts of the proposal because, first of all, I want to commend the staff. I think this is a very well thought out program and proposal for us to look at. I like the idea that it's an opt in. And I think the $15 per meeting is a is a generous and but thoughtful number to attach to the per meeting stipend. I wanted to comment on the income at or below 100% AMI. That, too, is a very generous interpretation of what we should be doing. And I just want to remind everyone that in Isiqua, a person could be making 100% AMI and be cost burdened when it comes to housing. So even though that may appear to be a very high bar or a very low bar, however we however you look at it, I think that it is taking into account the realities of our community and what it actually takes to live here and the kind of income it takes to live here. So I really think that is a good part of the proposal. In my experience, you may not realize it, but the school district has had this kind of program available for school board members for probably two decades. In my experience, we're going to have a lot less than 20% take advantage of this program. But for those people who do take advantage of it, I think it will be a very important way to lower the barriers to public participation in our community. So again, I commend staff for what I think has been a very well thought out proposal.
Thank you. Not seeing additional council members. I did have comments on this as well, this Council President Hunt. I am supportive. I am supportive of the the details that were presented in terms of the amount and the criteria. I do think it would, it will be beneficial to try to make it as easy as possible for the people that are filling out the forms for the payment requests. And so to that end, I think it would be good to explore pre prepopulating that form, for example, so then city staff doesn't have to verify, but rather it would be on the form already and the person could submit it. I think that could also save that additional step in case there was discrepancies. So that would be my additional ask of the the administration is to make that process as easy as possible because one of the, one of the things that affects people, affects people's ability to serve on commissions is is the amount of time it takes. And so we want to make sure that we aren't adding time to that. That would be my comment. Again, overall supportive. And then to summarize the council comments, there was support, also wanting more information in terms of how do we, how do we determine success or the impact of this of this program? And we would like more information on that when it returns to council. So at this time, I'll check in. Chief of Staff Eggers, do you have what you need in response to the questions that you posed for council?
Yes, we'll propose with what was presented and work on the timeline of bringing this back to you. And thank you for your input. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then we will move to the last item, which is ID 0907, Title 18 Land Use Code Updates. This will be presented by Director Dolly Wall.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and talk about a very important project that has been on the council's desires to to tackle. And we are here excited about having met some milestone while we're early in the process. We wanted to share all the work that has gone into up to this point and what lies ahead and get your feedback at this point. But before we get into where we are and what the project is, I'd like a quick minute to introduce our team that is involved in this project. So we have Katie Cody from BHC. She's our lead consultant in managing the rest of the consultant team. And we have Brian Scott, that some of you may remember from Strategic Plan Times. He's helping us with the public outreach. And we also have Jim Johnson, who is assisting us with the steep slopes geologically hazardous areas. There were some questions relating. There were some questions related to that and he was really helpful to answering those for the Planning Policy Commission and the Environmental Board. So, we asked him to join us tonight. And from our staff team, we have Doug Yormick. Uh, he is leading, uh, staff lead on the environmental piece, uh, critical areas. And Emily Appleton, our engineering manager, she's assisting with the steep slopes code and handling that. So, all of you can wave or say a few things if you want to say to your, um, council members. Um, so with that, um, I will start off my presentation. Um, Clerk, will I be able to present?
Yes, you should be able to present, Minnie. We can see your screen.
Great, and I will start.
That looks good.
Right, um, so it, as I said, this is the land use code update. It's been referenced as Title 18 in our Issaquah Municipal Code. Um, and the purpose of the meeting tonight is really to get input from all of you, um, on the proposed approach. So, um, we have, uh, started, um, the natural environment topics, but we are also seeking input on overall how we're doing, um, um, all the different topics, what lies ahead, and if we need to adapt what we've been doing so far. Um, so we're seeking direction on three things. Uh, one is to get some, uh, direction on priority topics and policy questions for planning commission's review. Uh, we're looking, uh, to get approval or, uh, for the proposed approach that we've worked with the Planning Policy Commission and the Environmental Board on the natural environment topics. And then we're also looking at, uh, feedback on the schedule. Um, we heard, uh, from a few, uh, council members. So, we are going to tackle this in a certain order that will help facilitate the meeting tonight. So, there's a little bit of, uh, moving of the topics. Um, so the way it's gonna work for our discussion tonight is I'll present the background and the status update. Um, and then we'll pause for a little bit of the questions, uh, if you have anything on that. And then Katie is gonna lead the code topics prioritization. We moved the scheduled discussion from the end to up here because, uh, we heard some feedback that the prioritization, uh, impacts the schedule and how we discuss those two need to be discussed together. And after each one of these, we'll pause, uh, for you all to discuss. Uh, we have some sample policy questions. Depending on, uh, your direction on the prioritization, we can then focus and get some additional input on what are some policy questions that'll make, uh, getting feedback from all our boards and commissions that you just, um, you know, heard briefly in terms of how, what it takes to attend those night meetings, go through those reading packets. Uh, so they're doing the heavy lifting on this whole code update, uh, and we want to make their input meaningful and, um, and help council make the decision when it finally comes to you. And, um, so these first two, three, four are really process and, and oriented, uh, type of questions, but with some feedback on the policy part. And number five, the natural environments topics, this is where we'll share with you at a high level of what Planning and Policy Commission and Environmental Board has the work they've done, the approach that we've selected, and get your, um, uh, feedback on that approach. Um, so that's sort of how we intend to, uh, discuss this topic tonight. Um, so in terms of the background, as you all know, we have a land use code adopted in 1996. Over the years, it's become a patchwork of ordinances. And you all authorized the consultant contract in April. And, uh, we've been working since then with our consultant team, um, to get to this point. Um, and we've divided this code update process into three different phases. So, the first one is where we're at right now, uh, which is the gaps analysis and the policy guidance on the different topics. Um, once we get through the first phase, um, we will present the actual code drafts, uh, for public hearings. And for, that'll be handled by the different boards and commissions. And lastly, after the public hearings, um, Planning Commission will deliberate, they will make a recommendation on the final draft, uh, before it'll come to city council for your final decision. Um, so those three phases then are, the way we've, you know, decided to split Title 18 is into these six different groupings. So, there are six major groupings. Um, the first one, natural environment, we are, um, addressing this with Planning and Policy Commission and Environmental Board. And it includes, uh, all the aquatic critical areas, um, wetlands, streams, fish and wildlife conservation areas, critical aquifer recharge. So, the city gets a lot of, uh, their water, 50% of the wa, drinking water from the, the wells. So, we need to protect the drinking supply and this is the code that does that. Uh, geologically hazardous areas. So, those are a little bit different than the aquatic, uh, areas because you also have to take into consideration public safety. Um, that comes, um, that's, you know, safeguarding the public, um, uh, safety, um, because of these hazardous areas. And then we have these shoreline, um, we, you all did the shoreline master program update last year, and there were some pieces that you wanted us to look further into. So, we're handling those under that category. Uh, the outdoor lighting, I think is somewhat tied to, um, the shoreline impacts, uh, to aquatic life, but also in general for citywide consolidating it in one section. And then, of course, the, a very important topic for the community has been sustainability. The, you know, we're in the process of working on the Climate Action Plan. Um, and this will be tied in, uh, and we'll work together with the sustainability, uh, staff and, um, and us and community members, um, in, in bringing, and forth some of the recommendations related to sustainability. So, that's the first larger topic and we tackled that first and, and we get it. We tried to do a lot of topics there. Um, and so then we've adjusted and adapted, uh, the remainder of the topics into, into little bit smaller groupings. So, for the second, uh, grouping, we have landscape and open space, uh, which we handled with Planning and Policy Commission and Parks Board. Um, we had our meeting, uh, earlier this week. Um, in that, we handled landscape standards, trees, and green necklace and open spaces. Um, and so, the remainder of these topics, the zoning and uses, building and design, and zoning and development standards, uh, we are intending to do joint meetings with Planning and Policy Commission and Development Commission. Um, and that includes all these different topics related to land use and, uh, building, design, and development standards. Um, and lastly, it's the procedures and administration, and that'll be handled just by Planning and Policy Commission. Um, and it includes the, you know, what's a public notification? What are some of these, uh, other, um, uh, topics that we need to, to address that are, that make up Title 18, uh, today and, um, are part of this update? So, that's sort of the, the discussion of how, um, the whole, uh, Title 18 is being divided up. Um, in terms of a public outreach plan, um, you know, we've, uh, we've set on this path of having these joint meetings between the commissions and the boards. Um, we've had affinity group meetings led by BDS Planning. And, uh, the first one they had was on the environmental topic. So, we've identified community stakeholders that bring in their unique perspective to those topics of discussion. And Brian can speak to, um, there may be additional, you know, there are four other top groups that we'll be, we plan on meeting. There'll be an open house with the stakeholders, uh, planned at some point. Um, we've already done the field tour with the Planning and Policy Commission to help them, uh, make the connection between the code and what it means on the ground. We're maintaining a robust website for all community members to go in and see when the next meetings are, uh, links to all the, all the topics, so it's in one place. Uh, public comments, we're organizing them by topic. We're tracking them in a matrix and we're including them with all the planning and policy, uh, agenda packets. And in your packet tonight, we've included the latest one, uh, all the comments that we'd received when the, the deadline was for this agenda packet. Um, that sort of is the overall, uh, look at our code. Um, and, you know, what, how we're breaking it up, what process we're, uh, marching forward, and how we're adapting as we've learned, uh, a few things with our first few meetings with the boards and commissions. I think with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian to say a few words and then Katie will walk you through on item number two.
Great, good evening, council members. Good to see many of you again. You'll remember me from the strategic planning, uh, process. Um, and we had plenty of meetings on that topic. Um, uh, and this land use code update is really an extension of existing visions and, and plans that you already have in place. You've got the strategic plan, which gives high level, uh, direction to the city. You've got the comprehensive plan that states a vision for the community. And the purpose of this land use code update is to make sure that the codes are actually implementing the vision that you've articulated in those documents. And as you may have already seen, when you were looking at that big matrix of everything that's in, this is a complicated process. There's a lot of stuff in that code. And I think one of the challenging, that one of the, especially because it's Issaquah and people in Issaquah really love to participate and, and chew over issues. And the trick for this process is gonna be whether or not you want to re, go back and revisit all those visions that you've already done, or whether we're just focusing on, you know, whether the land use code is implementing the vision that's already there articulated. And that's gonna be one of the first questions that get posed to you this evening is, is, you know, are we just trying to figure out if the code is implementing the goals and outcomes chart that you've articulated? Is that, is that the job of the Planning and Policy Commission? Or do you want to revisit whether or not those are the right goals? Um, uh, 'cause it, it won't surprise you that some people show up and they, if, if the goal doesn't, if, if they aren't getting the thing that they're looking for, then they want to revisit the goal. And so, you know, that's one of those questions that, uh, is coming up already in this process. And another question you're gonna get tonight that, um, Katie and Minnie will take you through is sort of how, how much detail are we gonna go through in this process? In our initial design for the process, we've got six topic areas that Minnie just went through. And we've got the, the gap analysis phase, we've got the public hearing phase of the draft plan, and then we've got the final draft. So, we've got three meetings on six topics, three times six is 18 meetings in the first design. And at the very first meeting of the Planning and Policy Commission, they decided it was more than they could handle in one meeting. Um, so if we decided to have two meetings on each of those things, then suddenly we go from 18 to 36. And so, just one of those questions and, and, and Minnie and Katie have a proposal for kind of splitting the difference. But I just want to call your attention right at the beginning to say you've done a lot of good work in the past. Folks in Issaquah really love to chew on details, but this is a big, long, complicated process and the time to kind of set the right level, I think, is now. And so, it's good we're checking in sort of on where that, where that is. Um, I think Katie's gonna take it there and talk in more detail about the process, but I kind of wanted to set that level and, and make my observation that knowing kind of how Issaquah likes to chew on issues, it's important that the council sets sort of a direction at what level you want to get into this through the rest of the process.
Thanks, Brian. Um, Minnie, could you bring back the PowerPoint, please?
Yes.
And that, that was a good cue up for what I, for what I wanted to discuss next. Um, so, as Brian mentioned, we've been thinking about some different ways of, um, of managing our discussions at the Planning Policy Commission level and with the other boards and commissions that they're meeting with jointly, to try to make sure we use our time with them the best we can and we get the best and most meaningful feedback, um, that helps us make sure we're focusing on these high priority topics that, that reflect the Title 18 goals and outcomes document. And along with that, we want to, um, look at the schedule that, a, a few different scheduling options, um, and get the feedback from council on the right level of involvement, um, with those boards and commissions. So, as we've worked through the first batch of the code updates, we've held a number of meetings with the Planning and Policy Commission, um, and the Environment Board and the Parks Board. And we also plan to hold joint meetings with the Development Commission, as Minnie mentioned. Um, our intention has been to provide the boards and commissions and community members with education on the code topics and to si, seek specific feedback on certain policy approaches and options. So, going forward, we'd like to continue to engage the boards and commissions in a way that's meaningful and supports the city's priorities for Title 18. So, on the next slide. Thank you. So, this is a summary of that goals and outcomes chart, which is attachment A, um, to the staff report in your packet. And what I've done here is added a column on the right-hand side, which, um, lists the different code topics that are related to the 13 goals and outcomes. And I've highlighted the areas which we have not yet addressed in our gaps analysis and policy direction discussions. So, these would be, um, if we were, if council were to direct us to proceed with prioritizing our conversations on just those items that are, um, directly linked to these goals and outcomes, the highlighted areas on the right would be where we would have our policy discussions going forward. Um, and you can go to the next slide, Minnie. So, clearly, that's not all of the areas that we need to address in the code update. So, this, this is again Minnie's, um, table of the different code update topic groups. And the highlighted areas are all of those topics that tie directly to the 13 goals and outcomes. And, um, you'll see the, the two columns on the far left are the meetings we've already had with the Planning Policy Commission. And then, um, the four on the right are the meetings we are, we have yet to have. So, our proposal would be to focus on these highlighted areas at these upcoming meetings and really figuring out the right policy level questions to ask to the boards and commissions, to engage them in meaningful feedback, while also providing them, um, our gaps analysis and update approach for all of the code topics. So, um, just as we prepared code update memos for these first two meetings on each one of those code topics, we would prepare the same level of information for the rest of the code topics, but we would just focus our conversation and our discussion at the meetings on these higher priority areas. Um, go to the next slide, Minnie. So, in conclusion, we're looking, if we, the options would be to provide the gaps analysis and seek policy guidance only on the topics identified in the goals and outcomes document. That would be option A. Or we can continue the way we started the first couple meetings by providing the gaps analysis and seeking policy direction on all of the Title 18 topics. Go to the next one, next slide, Minnie. So, if we, if we were to, um, choose option A, or if you were to provide direction to choose option A, uh, this would be the breakdown of the policy topics rece, or the topics receiving policy direction. I apologize, this is a little bit small and hard to see, but this is just a reorganization of, of the words that were in that chart two slides ago. So, upcoming, um, policy guidance would be sought for parking circulation facilities, zoning and permitted uses, neighborhood overlays, design and development standards, terrain management, and public notice procedures. And, um, although these don't directly have the same wording as the goals and outcomes, um, these are, these are the topics we connected most to things like, um, protect a neighborhood character. That's comprised of neighborhood overlays and, um, design and development standards, for example. And, um, a goal seeking housing diversity, that would probably be addressed in the zoning and permitted uses, perhaps. So, then again, these topics in gray, um, below in the left-hand column, those are the areas where we've already gotten policy direction from the PPC and other boards. And finally, the, um, bulleted list on the right, these would be topic areas that we would be providing a gaps analysis and our approach for the PPC and others to review and provide feedback on, but we wouldn't be prioritizing these topics for discussion at the meetings. Um, and so, this changing around the way that, that we focus our meetings will possibly, uh, will potentially make it possible for us to reduce or shrink the number of meetings um, from, from the maximum amount that could possibly, um... occur. And I think that the best way for me to describe that is to hand it over to Minnie, and she'll show you a couple of options.
Should we pause for a question first?
Yes, if we could, we do have a question. So thank you. We have a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So on the the topics that on option A that says provide gaps analysis, but no policy discussion on these topics, what kind of discussion, what other kind of discussion is there? So can you tell me what, how these get the light of day and what kind of public discussion there is then?
Sure. Thank you for your question. So when we would take these topics to the Planning Policy Commission, we would prepare for each of the meetings by creating a code update memo, which is our way of detailing the gaps that we see in the current code, any relevant state policy or city policies that we need to incorporate into the code update. And then we would list our approach for updating the code. A lot of these, we won't be proposing major changes. I can take, for example, the SEPA rules. For the SEPA rules, we're looking at making sure the SEPA rules comply with the state law. We may not be, we may be adjusting some thresholds, and we would identify those. And but largely, we're just cleaning it up and making sure it's consistent with state law. We would present that, provide provide that information in the code update memo. And if there were questions on the approach or feedback, we could, we could have a conversation about that if if that was directed by a member of PPC. But we wouldn't be proposing specific conversation points on that topic on the meeting agenda. So if, after we provided our code update memos, there was a lot of public comment on that topic or commissioner questions, then we could be prepared to talk about those specific questions. But we wouldn't be bringing specific policy questions to them on that topic.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think you can proceed with the presentation. There are no other questions right now.
Okay, I was just going to hand it hand the mic over to Minnie to talk through the scheduling question, options.
Sure. Thanks, Katie. So as you, as we've laid out, option A, which is prioritizing those topics for discussion, but including everything in their packets for the boards and commissions to to end, the community members to know what the proposed approach is going to be, and still soliciting input, but not having a policy guidance sort of a discussion on. Here are the implications for the schedule. So when we first started this process, we had three different phases, and we, for each phase, there was one meeting per phase. And clearly, that became obvious after that we need more time under the gaps analysis and policy guidance stage. Because, one, there's the educational piece, two, there was more interest in the environmental topics. And there were a lot of goals and outcomes chart had a very high priority to that, to those topics. So clearly, we tackle the topics that had more interest from the community and from the boards and commissions. So we adapted that to this option two, which is what we're recommending, that during this early phase, when everyone's learning what the different policy options are, what the different topics are, that we break it out down into smaller pieces. So we, you know, the 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 schedule that's in your packets shows twelve meetings for this first phase. But for the public hearings and the final drafts, there's going to be, you know, what we can, we can have one meeting per each of the groups. However, we're committed to releasing the drafts at least a month prior to the meeting, so everyone has enough time. It's not going to show up, you know, five days prior to the meeting for everyone to read up and ask questions. And we would hold open house just staffed by staff to answer any questions from any board members or community members that may have, and and we can break, you know, we would couple the actual detailed code language with some breakdown of, you know, here's the proposed approach, here's how it meets the the goals and outcomes chart. So there would be a more easy to understand, you know, one-page document that'll go with those released drafts. For it to be successful, to have these, you know, twelve meetings for the public hearing and the deliberation stage. And of course, if the council desires to have more meetings in phase two and three, then we've laid out this option three here, which takes you twelve meetings for each phase. And and it'll drag, you know, it'll get get us to in front of council towards the end of twenty twenty-two, which we will need to amend our contract with our consultants and potentially have some additional resources needed in order to do that. But that's that's an option if council desires to include additional meetings for phase two or three. And one thing I should also mention is that as as each of those six groupings of topics are addressed by the boards and commissions, at the end, when they finish those those six topics, we would have one public hearing on all of all of the code combined together with the boards and commissions. And we and we've budgeted at least two meetings for that comprehensive public hearing before it comes to council. So these twelve will have additional two meetings, and we can still make it to council under option two in September. Under option three, we will be back to council in January of twenty twenty-three. So that those are some options in terms of schedule, but and and, you know, council can look at an alternate schedule. Or we can come in and check in with council after we finish the gaps analysis in February, we could come come back and see and give you an update of how things are going. You know, we could do a check-in at that point as well. So multiple options here.
Thank you, Director Dollywall. We do have a question at this point. Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks. I've got a few questions on this. So just to kind of clarify and see if I can understand what this means then. So if I take it from one of these subject areas, like for the natural environment topic, you're not proposing six meetings in phase one on natural environment and twelve meetings in phase two and three. What you're proposing there for option one, I should say, what you're proposing there on option one is it would get one meeting in phase one. So when we're really questioning what the policies are, there would be one meeting there, then one meeting to discuss the draft and public hearing, and one meeting for the final draft and deliberation. Whereas on option two, that bumps up so that for each topic area, there are two meetings on the gap analysis and policy guidance, and still one and one for phase two and three. And then option three, I think, is two meetings per topic for phase one. And then how how are you breaking that down for phase two and three? Oh, is it because there's that those additional meetings that you were talking about to do the overarching?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so but that is overall the the right way to look at that is the difference between option one and option two is double the number of meetings for phase one. So topics go from one meeting to two meetings. And then option three adds more meetings at the later stage.
That's right.
Okay, fantastic. I completely, oh, the other question I was going to ask is, so I think what you heard from PPC and from the ad hoc and kind of community feedback is that an individual meeting in phase one wasn't working. So I think what we've heard from the community really kind of kills option number one, is the only reason that's presented there because that's what was our initial goal.
That's correct.
Okay, so really what we're looking at, unless we want to go backward, is option two or option three. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and one thing I would add to, you know, what we heard from the community members was that one meeting July twenty-second, when we covered all the environmental topics, we ran out of time for having a conversation. So how we adapted to that was we created a survey, which all the board members filled out, and we included in the next meeting packet, but we we designated the next meeting just to continue that conversation. So we met on August twenty-sixth, just to kind of keep that conversation on those topics. So it's a, we already made that adjustment from one meeting to two meetings. We coupled it with with a survey document that actually some, we got some good feedback from some commissioners that filled out, and we shared it with the community in the next meeting agenda packet.
But Minnie, I also want to mention that when we had the meeting with the Planning Policy Commission and the Park Board, we were able to get through all of the topics, both the presentation, the questions, and the discussion in one meeting. So that those subjects maybe were a little bit, there were, it was the right amount of information, and we didn't need to have a second meeting for that group of topics.
Yeah, a combination of fewer topics, you know, less technical, like the critical area piece was a little bit more technical. So I think a couple of reasons why. And plus the learning curve of the boards and commissions as well. I think we also prepped the Park Board a little bit. So I went to one of their meetings to have a pre-meeting. We did the same thing with Environmental Board. So, you know, giving them the overall picture of what the Title XV update is also was was a strategy that that may have helped with that.
I don't have any other questions, if that's what you're waiting for.
Yeah, so should I continue with the presentation?
Yes, please go ahead.
So I think that captures this this topic. So the next topic, I mean, obviously, the options are one, two, or three, or an alternate schedule. And then we have some policy questions. I don't know if we want to do council discussion, take a pause now and do a council discussion on these before we move to some of the policy questions, if you want to, or we want to come back to all of that.
Thanks, Director Dollywall. I think because we have a, because we have a a public comment, since this is a study session, I think it will be best if we can go through the materials and then and as we go have questions. I think that's been good so far. And then we'll have the public comments, and then we'll have council direction. And at that time, I do think it'll be helpful to show the questions again, because there there are a number of questions here. But since we have that public comment, I think that probably makes sense.
Sure. And so, you know, we've, we've, here are some, if the council direction is to, yes, you know, pay more close attention to those high priority items, then we've identified some sample questions for you all to consider. So for instance, for parking, you know, what would help us from a staff's perspective of writing the actual code would be to get an understanding of what the right size parking numbers should be. Clearly, that's something that the golden outcomes is chart is looking for. We we could ask how these goals, you know, relate to an emphasis on non-motorized transportation in the Climate Action Plan. What are some strategies for off-site overflow parking? When we took the Planning and Policy Commission on the on the tour, one of the things, you know, we were standing outside the Atlas Project, and there was a lot of good feedback and conversation about, well, you know, here's the parking number, but the overflow parking is going on the adjacent commercial property. The on-street parking fills up even though people have designated in parking stalls in the in the apartment complex itself. So really trying to relate it to them where we can learn from their lived experience and inform the code writing as far as parking goes. What is the right amount? What are some, you know, parking management strategies that should be in the code? So keeping them at that level. Some of the questions on the public notice could be, you know, at what point do we increase the public outreach? What we've heard is a lot of times, community, you know, recognizes when things are actually happening on the ground. They see some construction going on that raises a concern. So even though there is, you know, how do we make sure that the outreach occurs at a point where they can be meaningful and input put in? What are some specific outreach methods that could be strengthened? So we could get some feedback related to that before we write the code. Housing diversity, which is also the high priority subject, you know, we were thinking we could ask about where should it be in central Issaquah, throughout the city? So, you know, flushing out some of those policy level guidance pieces related to housing diversity would help us craft some code language to that. So those are our attempts at, is this the right level of conversation that would be useful for council for the boards and commissions to focus on? And if you have any other suggestions on what would be helpful, you know, we're seeking input on that. So that concludes the first part, and then I think we'll go through what the proposed approaches for the natural environment topics. Should I keep going, Council President?
If you could pause for a question, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. It's actually on the previous slide. So talking about kind of those policy questions that you're asking PPC. So this is the area where we get the best feedback, where the code writers get the best feedback on what kind of details we want to put in there. So you've talked about some questions here, but is this in addition to the kind of the the framework that the memo has presented, which is, hey, here are the gaps that we've established? So those aren't as, are you asking about the approach to those gaps as one part of the discussion, and then these are other policy areas that we could consider that aren't part of those gaps? Or how does that have the gaps and policies relate?
Sure. So the way the the code update memo is formatted, and we didn't include it in your packet, but it's included in the PPC packets, and I can pull it up here if that's useful. But it it breaks down into the gaps, you know, looking at strategic plan, looking at state law, where where are the missing gaps in Title XV? Then we have a peer city research section. Then we have our proposed approach that we're not seeking policy guidance on. And then there's a section on policy guidance where we where for wetlands, we, you know, we got into the details of which methodology that ecology is recommending. Out of the three that they recommend, should we pick? So there was more targeted and more detailed feedback that we asked for in in those. So these policy questions would be part of that code update memo under the the policy guidance section.
Okay, so it sounds like there, I I understand how the memo is structured, but I'm wondering it is, does this represent the kind of sole focus of the meetings around, hey, here's some policy questions? Or is is that of kind of equal weight to the previously identified gaps and how the approach is to answering them in this code update?
Yeah, during the two-hour meeting, we won't walk them through the the gaps or anything. That'll be in their packet. Our focus of the conversation is going to be on these policy level questions. Yeah, that would be just a background information for them to have, but I think what we found is more useful is we we get to the proposed approach and the policy questions right away, as opposed to walking them through all the other pieces. That's more efficient. It gets us more, you know, targeted information and and use, good use of their time.
Okay, thank you.
I I have a follow-up question. In the packet, and so far, it seems that the questions much more are along the lines of, does this meet the goals and objectives in the goals and objectives document for Title XV? These seem much more targeted, so I'm wondering, similar to Councilmember Walsh, would these questions reflect the areas where it doesn't, where the commission, for example, identifies that it doesn't meet the goals and objectives in specific ways, and then you have follow-up? Or how how would these questions, I guess, be formed?
Yeah, good question, good discussion. I think we're looking for, we can structure it anyway. I think that we the the first meeting that we had on the environmental topics, we were getting more we were getting more nuanced feedback from the policies, you know, from the options and things like that. We scaled it a little bit up at the next meeting to be at the level of, does it meet the golden outcomes? You know, that are, some folks in the commission liked that approach. Others felt like it was too far removed and they wanted to actually see the code. So it comes with different, you know, in terms of the results or the outcomes of staying too high or too much into the weeds. This is what we felt was maybe more meaningful than if we stayed at a middle place here. But of course, one of the questions we'll always ask is, is our proposed approach that we've shared with you the right approach to meet the golden outcomes chart? I think we still want feedback on that as a capture-all. But where we're seeking policy guidance, we would break it down at this level, which isn't too much into the code, but isn't too high where we just get a yes or no answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, should I proceed with the natural environment topic?
Yes, let's do that, thank you.
So like I mentioned earlier, so this was the first big group of topics that we addressed. And there was the aquatic critical areas, which included the wetlands, the streams, the fish and wildlife conservation areas, the aquifer recharge areas, the geologically hazardous areas, which includes the coal mines, to the liquefaction, to the steep slopes, you know, anything that could potentially lead to a public safety concern or protecting the property damage. So that's slightly different than your aquatic critical areas where the focus is on habitat and protection of the environment. Shoreline setbacks, we'll get into that a little bit, sustainability and outdoor lighting. So those were all the topics under this big group. So our, what Planning and Policy Commission and the Environmental Board have done the heavy lifting, they've read through those, you know, knee-deep packets, tried to understand all that and given us feedback. And based on all of that, our proposed approach, you know, at a high level for you all, we included the attachment app that gets into a little bit more detail. But it basically will align our regulations with the best available science guidance from ecology. Obviously, there are multiple ways ecology gives us guidance. We vetted it out with the boards and commission and picked the approach that will give us the largest buffers that take land use intensity into consideration, that take habitat scores into consideration, all of those things. At the end of the day, there will be ecological gains instead of maintaining the status quo. Then the other piece of the equation is what is the impact to the development or the developable area? Yes, there will be some, because the buffer widths are going up for wetlands, but it's going to be comparable to what our neighboring cities already require. So our buffers and some of the other things are not aligned with the best available science guidance. While we have done, a lot of them are, but some things are not. One of the main things is going to be no buffer reductions allowed for wetlands. But the boards and commissions have given us some, you know, tasks to go back and look at how to build in some flexibility with the idea there will still be a net ecological gain. So we're going to be exploring buffer averaging, which is already in the code, but fine-tuning that or looking at other methods which build in some flexibility, yet result in a more net ecological gain. The geologically hazardous areas, this is the part that's a little bit different, like I said, from the other critical areas because the focus for the city's review here is to, in addition to protecting all the steep slopes and things, is also to safeguard public safety. So landslide potential is taken into consideration, the coal mines, the susceptibility of the soils, whether, you know, the buildings are going to be safe and so on. So I think the approach here is going to be strengthening the safety consideration. We currently have a 50-foot buffer from a 40% slope, from the top of the slope and from the bottom of the slope. And we asked the question that should that buffer be larger for certain situations? And the board said yes, and they gave us written responses in the survey of some examples of situations where those should be larger. You know, if there's a more landslide potential or there is erosion potential. In those situations, we can ask for larger buffers. Our current code allows those buffers to be reduced down to 10 feet. Our code doesn't allow development on 40% of larger slopes, but the buffers from the top or bottom of those slopes can be reduced down to 10 feet. And I got some questions on that. And we wanted to make sure that we were open and transparent with the community and council as to what can and cannot be regulated for these kind of steep slope areas. We can certainly build into the code language that incentivizes lower impact hillside development, where we can ask for minimizing the cuts. We can, you know, prohibit retaining walls for most situations. We can ask for off-trucking of soil to be reduced. However, if you, if someone owns a property that is completely encumbered by 40% slopes or more, the city's regulations cannot go to a point where we can prevent them from getting any reasonable use of their property. Otherwise, it's considered regulatory taking under the legal framework. So we would have to allow some reasonable use. We can set up a process, you know, what that process looks like for reasonable use. It will have to be a public hearing. It has to have very specific criteria that you've looked at in minimizing your impacts, and this is the minimum that's needed to get some economic value from your property. So we just wanted to put that out here so that it's, you know, as we change our code and then a development occurs on a steep slope, that there is a common understanding of how far the city's regulations can go. They can go for majority of them if there are other development potentials. However, in some circumstances, we are going to be bound by having to look at the reasonable use exceptions. The other example that I've shared with some of the council members is, if the only way to access that property is to get an access road, there are some limitations of where that access road can be. It may be driven by traffic safety standards. Fire truck, you know, access has a maximum grade of 15%. All of those have to be taken into consideration to provide some legal access to the property from a public street. So I think I'm seeing some questions popping up, I don't know if they're related to this. We also have Jim Johnson, who is very familiar with all these steep slopes and landslides that have occurred in our city. He has done peer review for a lot of those private developments and he was really helpful in answering a lot of questions from the Planning Policy Commission and Environmental Board. So I will call him on if there are things that he may, the council may have some questions for him. With that, I think that captures most of my discussion on this. Like I said, we can, you know, write into code, no retaining walls over X feet, but for certain circumstances, there will have to be some deviations built into the code. So with that, do you want me to take a pause, Council President Han?
Yes, we do have a question on this topic from Councilmember March.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Council President. This is the first that I've heard that if somebody buys a property that's all, when you say steep slope, is that interchangeable with critical slope?
So our code currently defines any slope larger than 40% or more, so really steep slopes, that, that, no development is allowed on steep slopes and you have to maintain a 50-foot setback from the top of that slope and the bottom of that slope. There is a process to reduce those setbacks from the top and the bottom, provided you can meet the safety considerations and go through a geotechnical peer review and such.
Okay, but what I, what I see there is these regulations are not able to prohibit development on steep slopes. Isn't that the opposite of what you just said?
Well, I was just, that is not able to prohibit steep slopes on all steep slopes. So yes, we can, but if, the example I gave was if someone owns a property that is completely encumbered with steep slopes, we have to allow some reasonable use of that property. If someone owns five acres and half of the property is steep slopes, the code can prevent them from building on the steep slopes and focus their development on the flatter portion of the site. However, if the entire property is steep slopes, then we would have to have some sort of a reasonable use exception.
I have never heard that before about critical slopes. That if somebody were to somehow get their hands on a parcel that was 100% critical slope, that they would be able to build on it. This is the first time, maybe I wasn't paying attention, I've been doing this for 12 years. I mean, I'll tell you, as an example, I have two acres, that most of which is critical slope. If I sold the upper acre of it, could somebody build on it? Because now they have a parcel of land that's all critical slope, which, I mean, I would never do and I shouldn't be able to do.
Well, I think it, yeah, so, so you can't parse out, if you came in and it's one big parcel, we wouldn't, you know, as part of the plating process, you can't create an unbuildable lot. So if you already own a large lot, we will look at it during the plating process and not create an unbuildable lot or a lot that has no access to it. But if you have a pre-existing lot, we are talking to one community member that owns one lot and he wants to build a small little home on it, and it is encumbered by all steep slopes. So we cannot tell him that you can't build your house here because it's fully steep slopes. But he has to meet all the safety standards.
If you do, you have taken the value of their property and you're going to have to pay them for the property.
Okay, steep slopes are steep slopes, critical slopes are critical slopes for a reason. It's because I've seen what happens to my neighbors when they attempt to do things with critical slopes. It's, all right, honestly, it's the first I've heard of that in 12 years on council. But how many parcels do we have like that?
You know, we can look at, do an analysis of steep slopes and really where, where some of these lots are that are completely encumbered by steep slopes. So we haven't done that analysis, you know, comprehensive analysis for that piece, but we can certainly take that exercise.
I mean, as a homeowner who lives up in the hills, I'm gravely concerned with anybody who would do building on critical slope. I understand the idea of a taking, but I also understand that, you know, there are parcels in the city that are fundamentally unbuildable. So, and we've heard from the community time and time again that they're concerned about destabilization of slopes. And it doesn't just affect the homeowner, it affects the neighbors potentially as well. So it's just, this is a very concerning thing to hear. And like I said, just somewhat surprising after 12 years, including many years on land and shore. So, thank you.
Director Dolly, well, I don't see any other questions on this part at this time.
Great, so then the shoreline setbacks. So what, this is something that council had requested, you know, you, we did the shoreline master program update last year. What the existing code allows is the buffer from the lake to be reduced to match the setback of the neighboring homes or when you are removing the bulkhead, which is just the shoreline armoring, which could be, you know, a concrete wall or retaining wall, it could take a different form, but a hardened, sort of an armoring along the water's edge, meant to prevent the property from the damage from the waves and things like that. So there's an incentive in the code that if you remove that, because ecologically it's better to have more softer shoreline, that the buffer from the water's edge could be reduced. So that's already in our code. I think council wanted us to explore to not grant those buffer reductions. And I think the exercise the city has taken on, based on that feedback from last year, was to look at what, you know, if we did not have a shoreline, this flexibility built in the code to allow the setback to be reduced. It is, it has to be coupled with, you know, a net gain. So you're either taking down the armoring or, and/or you're enhancing the buffer. If you want to take this provision out of the code, then would it be a hardship to the homeowners for any kind of expansion based, you know? So that's an exercise we're doing. It's a GIS mapping analysis that we'll share with the Planning and Policy Commission. We don't have that done yet, but we're expecting that should be done in October. But that will inform some options. So one option could be we completely eliminate the reduction and there's not an impact to anyone significantly, any of the homeowners. Or we keep that, but we allow some other, that they have to explore some other setback deviations, such as smaller setback from the street, before they actually ask for a smaller setback from the water's edge. But we're also developing more robust buffer enhancement and monitoring provisions. The shoreline master program is, has to be approved by Department of Ecology. We just heard back from them that they approved our last go-around. So when we come down to an adoption process for this, it'll probably be a separate ordinance because it'll have to be approved by Department of Ecology from the rest of the Title 18. So just as an FYI on that. Climate change and sustainability, I'm going to, yes?
Sorry if I can interrupt, Councilmember March had a question, I think on the last part.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Council President. A question, when you talk about shoreline, I'm wondering what the regulatory role will be of the tribes in this process? I see that they're listed as affinity group stakeholders, but I'm kind of, kind of sure the tribes have more of a role than just being interested stakeholders.
Yeah, so, you know, we had the first meeting with them and we had representation from the Snokeomi tribe, as well as from the Makoshuute Indian tribe. They asked us to share our draft code, where they will provide us information on that. You know, obviously, some of their focus is going to be on their fishing rights, maintaining those and how our code does or doesn't accommodate that. But in terms of a regulatory, you know, we want to solicit their input during this policy and the code writing so that as projects come in, they, you know, they can still comment during the comment period. If we got a development along the shoreline and it was subject to a shoreline substantial development permit, we notify interested agencies and they can comment during that time period. But they'll, our approval, our decision will be bound by what's in the code and whether it complies with the code or not.
I'm still a little confused, because I know in the past, when we did shoreline-related activities, the tribes had a regulatory role. It wasn't just that they were consulted, it's that we couldn't make decisions that were, that had impact on, for instance, so modded or whatever the adjective is, you know, salmon-related activities. There was a prescribed treaty-based regulatory role for the tribes.
I'm not aware of, but I can call Doug Yormek, who worked on the shoreline update, to see if that came up during the last update, to answer your question. I'm not aware of, but, you know, I'm new to Issaquah, I don't know what kind of regulatory role the tribes have played in shoreline programs, but that is not common for, they do comment during the comment period. They participate during the update, but I'm not aware of an actual permit that's needed or an approval that's needed from the tribes. Doug, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, at least in the, they weren't, they weren't a part of like the regulatory body when we went through the periodic update in last year. They were consulted during the process and they provided comments during the SEPA determination. But they weren't, they weren't involved heavily in the update process.
Councilmember March, this is Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. I just want to chime in. I understand that there are certain types of permits that require the Army Corps of Engineers to weigh in on and certain types of activities where the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction. And on those things, they consult with the tribes and the tribes do have some sort of regulatory ability as well to provide comment on those activities. So those are only certain types of So those are only certain types of uh, projects, I believe, and activities. So in this case, we are updating code, uh, it's more policy and code-related and we are, as Minnie has very well outlined, uh, working with them to ensure that uh, we're listening to their comments and that it's in line with uh, our mutual goals.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Director Dollywell, I think we can proceed.
Thank you. Um, so climate change and sustainability, um, Katie, do you wanna um, talk about this one?
Sure, thanks, Minnie. Um, so I've been uh, keeping close contact with Megan Courageous Murphy and the team that's updating the Climate Action Plan. And our approach to um, incorporating climate and sustainability into the Title eighteen update would be to um, take direction from the actions that are going to be adopted with the Climate Action Plan. Um, and not all of the actions obviously have to do with Title eighteen, but there are a number that she and I have identified together that um, could pretty smoothly be incorporated into our Title eighteen work. Some of those have to do with um, areas that we're already updating, like the critical areas codes, um, tree protections and some of the multimodal um, facilities for bike parking and other types of um, facilities for re- reducing vehicle miles traveled. Uh, and then, so there will be a a group of of code updates related to the Climate Action Plan that will just be done code-wide. Uh, and then in addition to that, we're also looking at creating a um, another point-based system that we're calling, or the Climate Action Plan calls the Sustainable Guidelines Program. Um, and that would be an option for developers to, either an option or a requirement that developers would um, perform certain enhanced sustainability act- actions in order to get uh, land use permits. So some of those depend on building efficiency, energy efficiency, um, and green stormwater management, which are again, outside of the Title eighteen update. But by creating this um, sustainable building guidelines, uh, point-based system that's still kind of under development, um, we can acknowledge those codes that exist outside of eight Title eighteen and and require some compliance or performance. Uh, like I said, that one is still um, in the conceptual phase and may take a slightly delayed um, timeline to complete, um, depending on what comes out of the Climate Action Plan process and the and the timing of some of these other city code updates. Um, uh, but in general, we're working closely together and we're hoping that uh, a number of those action items will be able to be directly implemented in this code update. And then if you wanna advance, Minnie, I can handle the outdoor lighting as well. So for the um, outdoor lighting topic, right now the the city regulates outdoor lighting um, in two places. One is in the central Isiqua standards, another is in um, Title eighteen. And so part of our update approach would be to create a combined outdoor lighting chapter. And um, this is one of those topics that is pretty straightforward. We're not proposing any major changes to the way that the city regulates lighting, but we did wanna in um, bring all the standards in general up to the industry best practices, um, update the technologies that we require and again, consolidating them into a single chapter. And then um, another piece that our lighting consultant is wa- is working on is um, comes out of the shoreline master program update. Uh, and she's going to be looking at some specific standards that address dock lighting um, and ways that we can um, protect aquatic wildlife that from from lighting along um, the docks on Lakes Mamish. And that's all I have for that one, Minnie. I'll pass back to you.
Sure, um, I think that pretty much concludes our our um, top, our proposed approach discussion on those topics. Um, so what we're seeking, uh, you know, input from council uh, is whether you appro- approve our proposed approach that we've outlined, um, or should we amend our proposed approach? Or you think it needs more work and you can remand it back to Planning Policy Commission and Environmental Board for additional work. Um, so again, I think the three things we've discussed tonight are the, what we just discussed, the natural environment topics, what should be the priority topics? Um, what level of question should we be asking for the policy questions? Um, what is um, the feedback on the schedule? So on those three items, um, you know, if if council can give us some feedback, that would be appreciated. Um, the timing and the next step, I think this is your standard slide. Uh, we're at the gaps analysis and policy guidance stage. Um, the public hearings, the deliberations and coming back to you are the next steps. Uh, and the entire, all three phases and council adoption process, um, you know, was scheduled for um, end of twenty twenty-two, um, depending on what guidance council gives us on the schedule. Um, again, a repeat of those three things that we're looking for. I think that pretty much covers our. So I wanna get back. Unshare. Sorry. Stop sharing.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Director Dollywell. At this time, we will um, have public comments. Uh, although if there are questions, um, that are, any questions before we um, move to public comment, if you can indicate in the chat? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Um, so we will move to public comments. So I'll check in with um, Clerk Geezer if anyone is on the line indicating a desire to provide a comment on this topic.
Yes, I see that um, we have an individual who'd like to make comments that's identified by the initial CM. I'm going to go ahead and make you a panelist now. You can then unmute and may also choose to turn your video on.
Shocking that CM might be Connie Marsh. I know you all were in suspense. All right, so that was a very long presentation now to have public comment on. So uh, it's hard to know where to begin. So I'm gonna begin at the beginning, which is, I would say, isn't it awesome that the community is so interested that they want to have more contact with the Title eighteen update? And I would try to embrace that enthusiasm to your advantage rather than trying to circumvent that enthusiasm. Because for years, we have been trying to get the community to engage. And so what I have noticed is there have been several unsuccessful meetings. And one of those meetings was the Park Board PPC meeting because, well PPC was able to speak, remember this was a single meeting. Park Board basically didn't say a word because they were just sort of stunned by the whole thing. It was talking about code as out of their bellywhack. They were supposed to learn all this information and then provide cogent feedback in the same meeting. It is simply not possible when you're dealing with part-time community people for them to be able to absorb unless they've been living in it and then speak coherently back. And so, well, I heard two people say that was successful. Uh, there was a lot of conversation like, Park Board, do you wanna talk? And also an explanation from the 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 Jeff Watling saying, well, this isn't what they usually do. So this is really hard. Uh, so I think that from a community point of view and a staff and consultant point of view, we have vastly different concepts of success. So uh, there is some confusion for me when there is a discussion of we have all of these policies. So from the Comprehensive Plan and Strategic Plan, so are we supposed to be following those policies? And then the rest of this presentation, use the word policy over and over and over as if we are creating different policies to go with our what current vision? It's un- unclear to me. The land use uh, Comprehensive Plan Chapter is what, six years old? Or seven years old, twenty fifteen? And and it is old and it has a lot of ancient language in it that is supposed to be our visionary language. So I disagree that we should be following old language and expect to get to our new world successfully. Uh, so if what you mean, I, policy is that you wanna examine the policies that seem to be out of date and then you wanna create a feedback loop that will go back to the Comprehensive Plan and update that plan simultaneously with code, I hate that pathway. It should be the other way, but the city of Isqua seems to do it this way a lot. I could get along with that. I don't agree that we should be following an outdated vision and expect for the community be, to be happy with the results, cause times have changed significantly. Um, let's get to my pet topic now, which um, was addressed obliquely but never answered. Are we going to address the exceptions? For example, being able to reduce the steep slope buffer to ten feet from fifty feet? And we already can expand the steep slope buffers, by the way, so that isn't a change. Um, are we gonna get rid of those exemptions? Because a lot of our code, as it currently exists, if we actually followed our existing code without exemptions, would give us a net environmental gain. But because we immediately go straight to how to reduce our buffers and how to change our code to accommodate the development, we don't even end up with no net loss. We end up with a reduction in environmental value. And so when you look at those charts that you were looking at, I didn't see except, exceptions in there. And that is really one of our core issues. It's not the code as it's stated. It's how can you get around what is in our code and what we are going to allow, what those criteria will be? And I think that needs to be brought out expressly as a topic of conversation and a great conversation for the council to say, well, how far do we wanna go? How flexible do we actually want to be to get where we want to go? And that, that way staff will actually be able to to get somewhere um, because they have sort of an overarching direction for that one. Um, I know I'm getting to the end of my my massive collection of topics here. Oh, yeah. Narrowing it down so that you only have policy conversations on things that um, basically are coming out of the council chart that was made by the Ad-Hoc Committee, which is how I interpreted that. My understanding with that Ad-Hoc Committee chart is that was just the beginning. That was like, okay, we put our thoughts together and we're just gonna start here. And we wanna absorb and understand what else we forgot and add to it, take away from it, so it was a fluid document. It wasn't something that was accepted as a a a standard by council as this is the way we wanna go. Cause I don't think council would wanna do that at the very beginning of a process before they heard anybody but me in the public talk about it, right? So um, I know staff is using it that way as a tool. I hear it at every meeting. And I would really like to know what the council's position is on that. How fluid should that be and how do changes get made to that? So it's not to make staff totally crazy, but just crazy enough to make a great code, right? So I'm gonna end with that and, oh, I guess one more. I agree with Ann, this all should be put down in a matrix so that it could be followed and people could understand what is going to happen with comment. It's not enough just to say, oh, we heard your comment. We need to know what you're gonna do with a comment. Because we're tired of saying the same thing twenty times because we don't understand what you're gonna do with it. So we're as bored as you are with with being redundant. So we need to solve that problem so we don't waste each other's time more. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Clerk Geezer, has anyone else indicated a desire to speak? No. Okay, um, at this point, I would like to check in with council if we would like to take a break before we get into the next part, or if you'd like to just continue straight along. Um, neither indicating in the chat. I I have one person with five-minute break. Five minutes, couple head nods. Okay, let's go ahead. Um, so uh, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break so we can come back at um, eight forty-one PM and start the next discussion. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, welcome back, council. Um, we had various topics that we will be um, providing feedback and having discussion about. So uh, my proposal would be to go through them in the order that was presented to us. Um, and we can pause at the various questions that were asked of the um, administration and of staff this evening. Um, if anyone has any uh, alternative way of going through this, please let me know. Um, we do have a bunch of different sections, so I think um, I'll summarize, but only if there's um, sort of differences in opinion or things are complicated. And um, with that, I will hand it over to Director Dollywell to begin um, with the first question that you had proposed, which I believe were around the scheduling. So if you could, if you could remind us or maybe bring up that slide, that would be helpful for us to get started.
Sure, um, so let's go to the top. Um, so the first thing we were asking. So I'm gonna bring this slide up. I think um, the questions we had was, should we focus the gaps analysis and policy guidance on topics identified in the Golden Outcomes Document or on all of the Title eighteen um, topics? And here's sort of the um, the two lists. So on the left-hand column are the topics for, that are covered under the Golden Outcomes Chart. Um, the the list on the right-hand side is uh, our other topics that we are part of Title eighteen, that we are gonna be updating. We will be sharing the cu- uh, the gaps analysis. But the discussion with the boards and commissions to make it a meaningful feedback um, from them will not dive into uh, policy questions, but will share with them. Uh, will accept any input that they might have, but we're not gonna focus our discussion. And so that's option one. And option two is we discuss policies related to both column left and column right.
Okay, thank you, Director Dollywell. Um, so looking for comments, deliberations, thoughts from council on these two potential approaches, which will then probably inform the discussion around scheduling. Uh, we've got a couple people lined up to comment on this part. Firstly, Councilmember Walsh and then Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Um, I think we, that this approach to segmenting down the areas um, where we're having robust conversations happened, I think because if you look at the list of topics already discussed with PPC, particularly that beginning environmental, there was just so much content that even if you brought up the exact right documentation, the exact right questions, um, it was really difficult to have an actual robust conversation and get the policy direction that we need as council and as code writers. Um, so I'm very much in favor of having a streamlined list. But I appreciate that Director Dollywell, um, and the consultants have said that, hey, we're not going to skimp on the information that we're providing. We're still gonna provide the memos and the policy approach and the gaps analysis and all of the things. I think this just gives me more certainty that these big picture areas that we've seen over years, um, with policies that have developed that aren't represented in the code. We know what those are. We know those big picture items. That's why. That's why these were called out. And so I think by streamlining the topics that we're talking about, we really get into those core meaty topics um that allow us to have the best policy feedback. And if there is policy feedback on the other areas, it really allows us to um get that too without subdividing the conversation so that um we go down maybe rabbit holes in one area, but not get the attention that it deserves in another area that the community is obviously said they uh care about quite a bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Uh, two thoughts, maybe three. Uh, first, I'd like uh paring down and focusing onto a narrower set of uh uh policy guidance areas. So I support that move. Um, I think um, I think it's important that we bring people along, particularly ones who are not steeped in land use policy so that they have a an understanding of why this is important. And then my final comment is on the right hand column, I would really like to see affordable housing move over to the left hand column into an area where we can uh solicit some policy guidance on um on affordable housing. It's just such a important topic right now in our community and I would like to see it um get a little more of a deep sea dive than um it would if it was just going to be on the gap side. Thank you.
Great. Um, okay. Any other council members wishing to comment on this um option options uh presented on prioritization? Yes, Councilmember Goodman.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Um, I have a couple of comments, but I want to have a follow up question to the comment that Deputy Counsel President Ray made. And that is, um, can you explain, Director Dollywall, why affordable housing is on this side, not the other side?
Um, sure. Um, so I think um with the affordable housing, we have some items that we're going to fix. Uh, we have the housing strategy work that was already done. So the so the actual title eighteen updates were going to be smaller scale, more housekeeping and and kind of cleanup type of things. Um, however, we're happy to move it into the left hand side. And it would be helpful for us to know what kind of um, you know, policy guidance would be, you know, if it's aligned with the housing strategies that councils did the work on. Um, that's one piece. If uh the other piece I think we can um look into is uh the code that we currently have, how effective is that? We have some incentives and things like that. Is that getting us? So there may be some work related to that, but that's going to be an ongoing work, not necessarily with the title eighteen update. Um, there are also some grand opportunities coming up with uh Department of Commerce. So we're, you know, there were multiple reasons. There wasn't just one reason, but but I I think with this effort of consolidation, moving the all the different pieces, um, there wasn't going to be a targeted um work in affordable housing, but that's an important work that will continue over the time. But I think we can move it into the left hand side if that's desired. That's not a problem.
Okay, I um, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. It's just happens to be one of those sections that has gotten a lot of attention. Um, and I say a lot relatively speaking than um most of the other sections of title eighteen. And so um my concern would be, or my thought would be if moving it over um opens another Pandora's box and creates a lot more work where maybe um that wasn't the overall um, that wasn't the overall focus and maybe doesn't need quite as much focus. Um, and I don't know the answer to that. Um, I'm just, I just think maybe that, you know, you all can look at it a little more critically and see if it needs to move over. Um, uh, the only comment I have about um the list of items on the right provide gap to the analysis, no policy discussion on these topics is to revise. Just think about how that gets presented to boards and commissions. If it's included in the packets, if the information is included in the packet and there's no presentation, then it's unlikely to ever even be discussed or brought up. So I would um suggest thinking about some little hybrid way of um at least inviting people to ask some questions or comments. Sometimes when we have lengthy topics, um, you know, budget discussions are are one example. We might have fifteen questions that were that were answered um in the in the week after council asked the questions. Rather than go over each question and each answer, we kind of quickly say, you know, topic one is about X, Y, and Z. Does anybody have any, does the person who asked the question or anybody else have any questions about the answer? So at least you give an affair opportunity for the boards and commissions to ask. Um, otherwise, you know, sometimes they're not comfortable. And sometimes we aren't either, but um I think some of the boards and commissions are particularly um less comfortable with process than we are. So that would be my suggestion there. And that's all I have for this slide. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so first a question. Um, where is the effect on fish habitat and watershed? In other words, permeable surface and buffers at creeks? I mean, I see shoreline setbacks and dock lighting, but there's a broader set of policies that affect uh fish watersheds? And how how are those teased out in the conversation? That's my question before I get to my comment.
Sure. Um, so the aquatic critical areas that included the wetlands, the streams, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and the aquafar. Um, so those are in that in that larger category. Um, it some of the development standards such as impervious surface, um, stormwater, um, and things and, you know, more green infrastructure, those kind of things would be under the design and development standards category.
Okay, thank you. And then the the comment is, and I don't really know where to put this comment, but I'm just going to put it out there. Um, I think that I was mentioning the tribes earlier. In this process, I think a lens that, speaking as one of seven, I'm going to look at is trying to understand whether our policies honor our treaty obligations, specifically the Stevens treaties, including the Treaty of Point Elliott and the responsibilities that we have to the native peoples uh to be partners on the lands that they still have the first and most fundamental uh rights towards. So I don't know what that looks like exactly, but I I come back to um wanting to see more uh about the tribes and their engagement in this process. So I don't know, I'm not trying to dictate exactly what that looks like, but in this whole process, I don't think I see the tribes enough in this uh process where it clearly impacts them in a way that I think uh relates to our treaty obligations. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Um, and I uh, Councilmember Hall.
Uh, thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Hall. Um, just a quick uh comment to say that I agree. I think this option A, um, trying to keep the focus on um, you know, the goals and outcomes chart that we have that have been identified by the ad hoc committee and council is is good. I did think um the member of the public that commented on this brought up a good point though, as um, you know, thinking evolves over time. I know the chart was developed in October twenty twenty, so it's a little under a year though. So it's pretty up to date. But um, I think the second column here, you know, we're providing gap analysis, but maybe thinking about it more like, and what I heard earlier was there'd be no policy questions posed to the group, but there there could be policy discussion brought up, discussion questions brought up by board and commission members or or the community, but not necessarily any posed policy questions that are brought up for specific discussion. Is that correct, Director Dollywall?
That's correct.
Okay, then, yeah, I would I would I would support this.
Okay. Um, just leaving the chat, if anyone who hasn't commented would like to make a comment on this part. Not seeing anyone. Um, I I will briefly comment that um I think prioritization is is important. Um, I think that it is also important to give people the information about the topics um such as uh the topics that are listed, I think, in the um right hand side. I think it's important to give them that information in a way that does invite, if they wanted to um provide feedback, that it invites that feedback. I think that's a good point. Um, the one that stands out to me in that list when I was reading it is affordable housing. One of the things that we thought about when when the ad hoc um committee made the table where the priority area or what what's being proposed as the priority areas were identified. One of the things we um thought about there was the uh interest of the community. And and I think that the community is um interested in having conversations around affordable housing. And I think they could help us with that policy discussion. We do have um plans that speak to affordable housing, but I think we have a ways to go in terms of implementing um those in our code. So I would uh, I would urge moving affordable housing over into more of a policy guidance type conversation. Um, I think streamlining though makes sense especially in light of the feedback that we've heard from the commissions in the first couple of meetings. Okay, and I'm going to just briefly summarize some of the other things that I heard because I think we did have um most council members uh comments on this. So um, I think for the most part, we agree with a prioritization strategy. Um, there was some some wanting to have more access to the topics that weren't specifically um that aren't specifically asked questions about though. And then also um more information about the uh land engagement with, and I think the role of the tribes in the process was another um aspect of this. Um, and have I missed anything? Let me know. And if not, we can move on to the next question. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Goodman.
Uh, thanks, Councilmember Goodman. It's not a uh, I could comment on it anytime, but since Councilmember Hall brought it up, um, with the comments that um Connie made about the goals and outcome chart, I just wanted to chime in and, you know, I don't, I didn't feel that the goals and outcomes chart was the be all and all. I thought it was the starting point and um uh, I I agree with her comments about it. You know, we don't want to sort of dictate um things before we before we go through the process. I think um it was in, it was just expected to be a a pretty good framework. Um, and I don't know what else to describe it, but I I didn't think it was written in written in stone. So I don't know how those, I don't know how staff might use our comments with that respect, but I did want to um chime in with my opinion on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks, this is Councilmember Walsh. I would also note that uh the Planning Policy Commission did have a good discussion on the goals and outcomes chart that was created by the ad hoc committee and provided some great feedback to that, um, including additional objectives, um, possible outcomes and desired uh possible actions and desired outcomes for many of those goal areas. And so that feedback has been kind of incorporated into um this thought process. What didn't really come out of that was any additional goal areas. And so I think the 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 public feedback is taken into account as far as what do we want to achieve with these goals? But the goals um so far with that public feedback have remained the same. So that's another piece to the puzzle.
Okay. Um, Director Dollywall, do you have uh what you need on this one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then I think we can move to the next um question.
So the next was the the schedule. Um, this is what we've recommended as option two at this point. Uh, we can, we're committed to uh doing a check in with council uh after the gaps analysis. If uh it's too, you know, uh at that point, an adjustment could be made. But uh the benefit of option two um is that it still gets the code adopted by next year. It does accommodate additional meetings um with an opportunity to evaluate after the gaps analysis if uh we need um more more meeting for phase two or three.
Okay, um, council, who would like to start us off on feedback on the proposed schedule? Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Uh, thank you, this is Councilmember Hall. Um, just real quickly to say that um I think it's pretty clear, it should be pretty clear to the council that we need more meetings in phase one as um Councilmember Walsh brought up earlier. Clearly, um, the commission needs more time to sift through some of this phase one work. Um, so I think, you know, option two or three, um, it adequately meets that expectation more for phase one. I like that there's kind of a check in meeting in between phase one and phase two. So um, I would be in favor of of moving forward with option two, the recommended option, and then um reexamining and seeing where we're at um there. Um, and then I had a quick question for Director Dollywall, and that is, option two didn't need an update to our contract, correct? That was just option three?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Then um I would be in support of moving forward with option two for scheduling. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Oh, uh, sorry, Councilmember Walsh, then Councilmember DeMichele.
I would have been fine to play second fiddle, but thank you. Um, Councilmember Walsh here. Uh, I think we are both being responsive to the immediate feedback that we heard from the Planning Policy Commission in saying, whoa, this is a lot to try and cover in a single set of meetings. So let's make sure that we have the depth that we need um for certain topics um as well as the very straightforward, direct feedback that we received from council at the retreat um in June or July, I think it was July, um, saying, hey, we want to get title eighteen done. We want to make sure that this is a priority and something we're moving forward on. And so I think the the combination of those two is, yes, we absolutely need more phase one meetings where we're doing the front end work before the code is written to say, here's what we want the code to be written as. I'm not sure we're going to need almost double the meetings on the phase two and phase three period. But from my perspective, that's really going to depend on that initial set of drafts that we start to see at the beginning of twenty twenty two. I think the first set of drafts that we saw on the sign code didn't meet my streamlined and, you know, really core component of optimizing that code for the readers and the users. And so if we're seeing that, then I think it'll potentially stretch out longer. If we're able to really get that streamlined code writing that matches the feedback received in phase one, I think option two will be just fine. So much like Councilmember Hall, um, I think knowing that we're going to have that check in point at that point um when we're done with phase one, and maybe we'll be able to start seeing some of that draft code to see what that looks like. That will give me more confidence in knowing that we can get it accomplished under the current contract and the current set of twelve meetings for phase two and phase three. So that's where I'm sitting.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to focus on uh one of the comments that Connie Marsh made, and that was, we need to know where our public comment goes. How does it affect the How does it affect the final outcome? And so when we do that check-in, I would really like to know, I would like to have some way of tracking and a, a way of showing us that this comments, or these body of comments that we receive from the public will influence, you know, this piece of code. I, I think that it's very frustrating to the public to come and make comment, and make comment, and make comment, and it gets all put into a nice table, and yet, did it make any difference? And so could we, at the checkout, have some, it, it might be a preliminary report, because I know that at the checkout, we won't be at the place where code is actually going to be in front of us, but could we have some way of tracking? This input changed our perception about what we were going to do about this or that. I think it's important for the public to know that their comments and their participation and their time makes a difference.
Thank you. I will also comment briefly on this one. From my perspective, the commissions that began work on this, they did request more meetings. I think, I do think better streamlining of the materials that are presented will also help them, because we do need to, the other thing I wanted to emphasize is we do need to get through all these topics, we need to get through all these meetings, and we need to get valuable feedback and, and get to the end of this process where we update our code. Also, you know, code is, code will be revisited in the future, but we really do, I think, as one of the fundamental pieces having to do with timeline, we do need to, I think, get this done. It is a relatively small delay that's proposed here with the additional meetings, but, but there's all kinds of other things that delay this process. And I just think the timeline, sticking to the timeline is important. I am okay with option two. I would also want to check in with the commissions, and maybe there are things that, if presented in a way that is, is really on target, maybe they require less discussion. That should certainly be an option if there's the, if that, if that comes up, because I did see some were additional meetings. And we certainly want quality feedback, but we also want to be cognizant of the amount of time that our commissions are, are taking on these, these topics, which is really valuable. So I think those are my comments. Concerned about the timeline, and it's sort of slipping over the course of various changes, but, but also recognizing that there's a lot to go through. So if more meetings is one of the desires of the commissions, then I think we should respect that. I see there's a couple more council members that want to comment at this point. So first is Councilmember Goodman, and then Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodman here. I am fine with option two for all of the comments that have been mentioned. I'm not sure that that's going to be the right number at the end of the day. I, I, this needs to be done right and not rushed. We don't want to stall, for the sake of stall. But, you know, we've heard that, that we have had some issues with the meetings because of, you know, all the material, and I understand that. And I appreciate the staff coming up with some options here for the schedule. And, you know, I don't want to drag things out either, but we have to do this right. And if it needs some more meetings, it needs some more meetings. So I'm fine with number two. And if we need to reevaluate later, add more meetings, then I won't be here to vote on that. But I, I can tell you that I would make sure, I would want to make sure that we're, that we're taking the time that we need to do it right. It's a long time coming, and it's super, super important. And we have adopted code since I've been on council, and then had to turn around and change it, probably because we didn't get the, give it the time it needed. So I don't want that to happen here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks, this is Councilmember Walsh. I'm not sure if it affects the schedule, whether it requires an additional meeting or not, but I'd like, or I, I think the Transportation Advisory Board, since they've done such great work on the Master Mobility Plan, really needs to be involved in the circulation and parking conversation. I know right now it's listed as PPC and DC. So, and I think it would probably be very unwieldy to have three boards in a single meeting. So I don't know whether that just needs to be taking it to TAB as an aside. But I, I would hesitate to move forward on transportation and parking and circulation things without the lens of TAB and the Master Mobility Plan.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marsh?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Councilmember Marsh. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Goodman, we have to do this right. It will take the time that it will take to do right. This is super important. It's taken us a while already. It'll take us a while longer. I support option two, and we'll see where we get, when we get into that phase two and phase three. And, you know, we'll listen closely, and maybe Councilmember Goodman won't be there, won't be up on the dais with us, but we will go to the public to listen closely and see if we've put enough time in to, to make decisions on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and let me see, I don't see anybody else wishing to comment on this. We'll take a stab at summarizing, and you can let me know if I miss anything. So I think, for the most part, we are in support of option two with some potential flexibility as needed to make it right-sized for the questions at hand, and the discussions at hand. Suggestion of assigning a topic related to transportation and parking to the TAB, and then also a suggestion for feedback when this is brought back to council, that there be a part of the, the table, the public comments and feedback table that explains how the feedback actually impacted policy changes in the different areas. I think that's, that was the feedback on this topic. I think we, not seeing anything else, so I think we can move on to the next.
Thank you. And so the next thing was, you know, I don't think we really need to hash out the policy questions, but if, if there is feedback on, is this the right level of information? Is it too high? Is it too low? Or is it just the right level of policy questions? That's all we were asking at this point. Not necessarily each, you know, topic is right and, and the details are right, but is this the right level of policy guidance that should be, that we should be seeking from boards and commissions?
Okay. We have a couple of comments lining up here. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. Yes, in, in a word, I, I think these questions are much more open-ended than some of the questions that have been asked to the board so far, which really just engender a, yes, this is the obvious best path, or no, I want to go into a deeper. I think this gives us more copious information that we can actually use to fuel decision-making, rather than just yes or no. So, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Well, my opinion is exactly the opposite. And, and if, if, I think the operative we're, we're doing here is the same, is the right level of detail informa, and information. Do the sample questions below seek the right level of detailed information? I don't, I don't really know. But if you ask me if these are the kinds of questions that you should ask, I would say, no, not, not without a whole lot of information. So should the city use King County's right-size parking model? I have no idea what that is. How do these goals relate to an emphasis on non-motivated transportation in the climate action plan? I have no idea. So what I would suggest is the questions that you ask should be followed by, should be, should include material and pros and cons, so that the commission, boards and commissions can actually have a thoughtful, you know, material discussion about it, so that they can actually provide feedback that's, you know, that's meaningful. Because it's really about the, the, the questions, how the questions are presented and the kinds of material. I actually, I don't know exactly what Councilmember Walsh is speaking of. And so perhaps there were, there are questions that are, and there can be certainly, questions that are posed that lead folks to a certain conclusion, maybe with all of the, without all of the relevant information. But if done appropriately, it should just adequately inform the boards and commissions as to why you're making the recommendation that you're making. And I think that's appropriate. But just asking the questions that are on here, no, that doesn't work for me. Thanks.
Councilmember Marsh?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Councilmember Marsh. I'll just say that, as an example, housing diversity, where should housing diversity be added in central Issaquah throughout the city? That, that's an incredibly huge question that, we already have this thing called Central Issaquah Plan, which I believe is still a thing that's, that we abide by as a city. And we also have a city strategic plan. And I, I agree with Councilmember Goodman that, that we need context and, and backing information on the questions. But that third one really is a huge, high-level, meaty policy question that has been debated, and in some senses, resolved and resolved again multiple times over the last decade. So it's a, I don't know, it seems like a very big question to just have in, you know, compared to, should the city use King County's right-size parking model? It's a very, 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 very different level of question than where should housing diversity be added, right? And, and the city hasn't taken a position on the first one, but it sure the heck has on the second one. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a comment, and I'll see if anybody additionally would like to comment. My first thought reading these was most similar to Councilmember Goodman when I read the, should the city use King County's right-size parking model? What I like about it is that I think it could lend itself to sort of a, we have a couple of options that we're considering, and they're both viable options. And so can we have a policy discussion around those options and how they would meet the goals and objectives of this code update? So I think if, if it's handled in that way, that, that could be good. And that also kind of has a direct relationship to the changes that are, that could then be made in the code, which would be good, I think, for the, for the commissions to, to really understand, like, when we make these comments and when we make a decision, how does that then influence the code? So in that sense, it's, it's, I think, maybe a, a level of question that could lead to those sorts of options. But at the same time, the question itself is, it is very specific. And it also, I think, presupposes, or maybe especially some of these other ones, like what are some strategies to present, to prevent off-site overflow parking? I think they sort of presuppose the problem, and then they suggest an alternative or a way of addressing it. So I would just want to make sure that the questions are really crafted in a way that, that addresses, that, that presents meaningful options that the commissions can understand about how we could address a certain problem that is going to be addressed with the code, and that they understand the options and how they would relate to different goals. So I don't, I don't think these kind of work in a vacuum, but I see where they're headed. And I think, I think that's potentially a useful way to craft the questions, especially if the commissions are also interested in, and wanting to weigh in on a specific kind of problem that they're working on, like off-site overflow parking, for example. So I will look through the chat if anyone has any additional questions or comments on this one. I'm not seeing any. I would say, in summary, this is kind of a mixed, mixed bag in terms of feedback from council. We have some council members who think it's potentially the right level of detail, and some council members who think potentially not. I think it, I think probably, well, council, let me know what you think about this. But I think once we have some more feedback from using this kind of question, or maybe question, you know, using questions, taking the feedback and, and crafting questions, and then using those questions and having those discussions, maybe we can get a better sense of if they're the right level of information at the check-in. That would be my comment. Okay. Director Dollywell, do you have what you need on this one?
Yes, I think that's good, good feedback. I think, like the, you know, like this, it's always going to be different. People read different things differently. And, but my key takeaways are give pros and cons, lay out options, try to be specific, but not too specific, where we can get some meaningful feedback. So we'll try and achieve those goals as we, you know, we'll give more thought to the questions that we pose to the boards and commissions to, to get meaningful feedback. So yes, I think we've got what we needed on this topic.
Okay, great. I think you can go to the next one.
So the last thing is, all of these topics that we've covered, we can go through them one by one. So aquatic critical areas, this is a proposed approach. You know, we can, there's a lot of detail and the, and the heavy lifting that the Planning Policy Commission and Environmental Board have done. But, so we're seeking, do you, do you have in general information from staff and from PPC that you feel good at this time? Or you need more additional information? Or if you need, have specific questions to any one of these topics, we can answer those?
Okay, thank you. And I think the overarching question towards the end of the presentation was around the options of, would you recommend, you know, going forward, would you recommend amending, and would you recommend remanding? So maybe we can also think about those, those as the overarching questions while we're giving comments on specific issues. So I do see one council member lined up. I imagine other council members will also want to comment on this one. So Councilmember DeMichele, you can start us off.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. So I want to start my comments off here. I have general comments on, on this question. I'm not a land use expert. I don't, didn't, don't dive deep into Title 18. And so reading through the materials for this was very, very frustrating. And, and I found myself going back and forth, back and forth, because we had questions that were laid out. You know, do you approve of this approach? And so wanting to do my homework and make sure that I'd look through everything, I found myself going back and forth, looking for different appendixes, attachments, you know, looking at the goals, going back and looking for information. And so just to give you one small example, the approach for the outdoor lighting standards was given on page 36, but the details explaining the approach and why, the rationale for it, was I could, I found it on page 162 in the packet. And in order to do that- And in order to do that, I had to look through a lot of other materials. And so the information to me was scattered and I understood why. I did sit in on the Policy Planning Commission and Parks Board. I watched it on YouTube a couple of days after it happened. But I understood why several people in that meeting said they couldn't comment because they didn't have context. And I think that Council President Hunt alluded to streamlined presentation or streamlined information. And I think it would be very helpful for people like me who don't have a background in planning and are, you know, just don't have the context that maybe a lot of the other people in the council do. It would be very helpful to have sort of a standard presentation that gives the context, you know, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Why is this approach being proposed? What's the expected outcome? How does it relate to the goals and objectives or goals and outcomes that the Ad Hoc Committee has identified? Just a standard presentation of material that would help someone like me walk through that information. And, you know, I, we heard it from Connie Marsh as well. And I certainly heard others, when I watched the PPC, struggling to give feedback because they just didn't have the context that they needed to make or to give valuable feedback. And so, you know, having gone through and done the work, it looks to me like these approaches are fine. But I think there's a way, better way that we can provide the general public with a contextual presentation of the materials in some kind of standard format that allows them to see what the issues are, what am I being asked to decide? And here's enough material so that I have an idea of how that decision should be stated. So that's my feedback. Let's see, I had a couple of other notes. For me, we've had, we've made decisions on the Old Town Design Standards and we also, on the sign standards where we actually had pictures. And again, without the deep background in land use, those pictures were really, really helpful to me as a council member to see what different concepts were. And so I'm just going to put that out there that maybe there's either graphics or pictures that we could start to use to illustrate some of the concepts that we're talking about. And so I'm just thinking of, how can we present this to the public in a way that laypeople who just need to know why we are proposing particular regulations? What's the rationale? And how can they get that understanding in perhaps one or two pages of presentation? So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Who would like to comment next? No one? Okay. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I will plus one, two, and three to what Councilmember De Michelle just said. As I think I told Director Dollywell, I've seen this information multiple times because of the Ad Hoc Committee and the PPC meeting, and I'm still having a hard time digesting it. So that is an overarching comment. I think trying to dig down into the details. I have concerns about the aquatic critical areas and the buffer areas just because I know we're so far behind the best available science. I, I, I think it is going to be a huge lift to try and get current properties up to any standards. I think there was a commentary about the PPC and Environmental Board recommended that the buffer reduction should not be allowed, but allow some other flexibility, such as buffer averaging when there's a net ecological gain. I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're going to make gains in this area when we're so far behind and when there are so many properties that are so close to the lakefront. And so I think trying to understand how the code gets operationalized there is important to me. I think obviously going with best available science and bringing our code up to something that our community supports and which protects the environment is fantastic. And it's the direction I think we want to go. I just need some more information about how it will actually come to pass when it comes to some properties. And so looking forward on this, one of the things that I know we all love is taking a project and comparing it to the code and what would happen. And so when looking at these areas of code, when we're looking at the drafts, one of the things I'm really going to be looking for is, hey, give me a set of projects that wanted to upgrade their docks. Give me a set of projects where we've got houses that are within the buffer and want to do a renovation or something like that. What, what is the impact of this code? Are we getting toward that direction that we're looking for? Because I'm just having a hard time understanding how all of that operationalizes. And similarly, I would say with steep slopes, just understanding how individual projects as examples would have that impact. Whether, because I think we've seen through our plans very clear, this is the direction we want to go in. Well, let's see whether the code actually gets us to that point. And then I think with the sustainability, I'd like to make sure that there is clarity to the public and to us about the fact that the Climate Action Plan isn't here yet. So we haven't yet developed the Point-Based Sustainable Design Guidelines Program. And so understanding what, if any, changes to the code might be made now to handle any climate change and sustainability topics, or if that area is just going to be a baseline rewrite and we are anticipating a future update with this concept of the Point-Based Sustainable Design Guideline Program that will allow trade-offs for developers in order to achieve some of the goals that we're looking for. So those are my comment areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. We do have a comment from Council Deputy City Administrator Snyder and then some additional comments from council.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Andrea Snyder. I certainly don't want to interrupt council comments when they're on a roll. I just wanted to chime in and say we appreciate the comments from council saying the materials are, are a lot. This, we have, it's a fine art to try to be able to balance how to provide enough information, enough context, and also not to overwhelm people. And so we appreciate your feedback on that tonight and we will continue to work on organizing the information in a digestible manner. And as part of that effort, I didn't know if it might be helpful for council for us to run back through each of those slides and try to get comments on each environmental topic approach, if that would be helpful for facilitating the conversation tonight. I know Councilmember Walsh just provided all of her feedback at once and that was very impressive. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Not sure all of our brains are functioning at that level at 9:30 PM. So whatever's helpful to council, we want to be facilitative to your conversation and to get your feedback on our approaches for each of these areas. So I don't know if Council President Hunt, you have a comment on that? Or I know Councilmember Marks is ready to provide some additional comments. Thank you.
Looks like maybe Council President Hunt has an audio issue. So I'm gonna, that's okay, just go ahead then with my comment. This is Councilmember Marks. Yeah, I mean, I want to speak, I would like to speak to the issue that's in front of us, you know, before we go back and talk to other issues. You know, I was gonna, we're gonna talk about this issue about the tribes and the role that the tribes should have, but there's a, there's a bigger issue here, I think. And I touched on it a few minutes ago. We've got a Central Issaquah Plan. We've got an Issaquah Strategic Plan. It is a pile of work just to get Title 18 to reflect that even before you start talking about new outreach into the community, which of course we need to have, but this is such, I mean, there is such a body of resolved policy already that needs to be addressed. I think this is a really, I mean, I think what you're hearing tonight with all these different areas of concern or interest is, I don't know, this just touches on so many areas and many of them we have spent much treasure identifying policy, right? I really feel like whatever we do going forward, and this comes back to the Public Outreach Plan and is the proposed approach right? I really hope that we see a balanced view. You know, we, at one point, we talked about having a policy that any new agenda bill would cite the Strategic Plan, right? Where it comes from. I guess what I'd like to see, and I'm coming around to, and I apologize if I'm, if I'm just sort of talking extemporaneously. You know, in engineering, we have this thing called the traceability matrix where you, where you show how requirements relate to features and tests that you've got of a system. And I guess what I'd like to see is some sort of traceability matrix on how elements of Title 18 reflect back to the Strategic Plan. I think we have a policy as a city that our Strategic Plan is our guiding document. And wherever possible, maybe not everything in there, does relate back to something specific in the Strategic Plan. But I think that should be our starting point for a framework of engagement with the public, which is first have our policies, as much as possible, reflect settled strategic plans before we open it up to sort of unstructured additional changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I can hear. Can you hear me okay? Thanks, sorry about that. My headset ran out of batteries, so now I'm back. And thank you for, Deputy City Administrator Snyder, for giving us options for how to proceed. I think, I think unless somebody commented on that to the contrary, it seems that, seems I think we can give the high-level feedback because there's a lot of more high-level feedback, I think, at this point. So just wanted to close the loop on that. I'm not seeing additional comments. I do have some comments that I can provide at this time and then I'll keep my eyes on the chat as well. So firstly, I agree with Councilmember De Michelle. And I would say even stronger, I have a background in this area and I still found it hard just in terms of the formatting. There were different parts of the materials that were formatted quite considerably different than other parts. And there were areas where you had some information about a topic and then you went to a different part of the presentation for more information. So I think organization into tables could help. I think formatting streamlined across, the one that stood out was the Affinity Group's document was very different than the other documents. So just streamlining the materials that are presented so you, you know where to look on each topic. For, for example, what's the goal area and how does it, you know, address the Strategic Plan, for example? I think that would, would help. It was hard to digest the information. I, I also think the idea is about having pictures. Pictures always help. Sample projects could help. Case studies, I think, could help. One of the things that, the, one of the things that was mentioned in a, one of the email comments that we received, which I thought was a really good comment, was that we, as the ad hoc, I think, had made a goal or had stated a goal around allowing flexibility only when it will demonstrably provide equal or superior protection of critical areas. So I think that could be a good guiding, guiding light and you could sort of structure around, does this, or why do you think these changes only allow flexibility when it provides ecological gain? I went in reviewing the materials, just to cite one example, there is one area in the critical area buffers where, using the Department of Ecology approach, you could have a smaller buffer, it's for a lower impact use case, but it's still reducing the buffer from what we have. Mostly it's increasing the buffer. But I think if there are cases like that, they need to be really justified because what we're setting out to do is reduce the cases where we are negatively impacting our environment by, for example, building in or negatively impacting the ecological function of critical area or wetland buffers. So I think organizing it differently, using more language that's understood widely would be helpful. Then in terms of the con, the specific areas, for the shoreline area, I will say that this is a concept, that the common line, which you could definitely improve, I think everyone's understanding of this with pictures, the common line setback is a concern. It's where you have houses that were built in the buffer of the shoreline. If they're in that buffer, then you have another house that wants to build to that line between the two houses that are already in the buffer, they can do that. So I, I think that's a different conversation than the removing bulkheads. But I understand we have to do a study first, but I really want to look at how we can reduce that because it's not, removing bulkheads could, you could argue that that provides benefit. But just building into the buffer because, you know, I think that there's a bigger conversation there and it is not particularly well explained. So I would like to, you know, have more conversations around those sort of problematic areas where we have exceptions. I think we can do that. The other thing that came out in our comment, or that Councilmember Marks mentioned around the critical areas is critical areas are critical for a reason. I think that's a, you know, that's a good overarching principle that also applies to the shoreline buffers. Shoreline buffers are shoreline buffers for a reason. So I think focusing on those areas is important and I think reducing all of the situations where we're not providing equal or superior protection, I think we shouldn't really have those. But if we do have those, we should understand why we have to have those. Yeah. And then lastly, you know, I think we didn't really get into these, but tree canopy, similarly, I think we should strengthen protections. I think we should explain what we mean by ecological gain if we're arguing that we can improve ecological gain with different, with changes. I think that, I think we can do that, but I think we need to do a better job of explaining what we mean. Yeah. And then I think, I think the approach, I would, despite all of those things that I just said, I would not recommend remanding it to PPC. I think they, I think they gave us feedback at the level that is useful to us. I just think we probably need the information presented back to us in a way that's organized more to how does it meet the goals? And then if it doesn't, or if there's some exceptions that And then if it doesn't, or if there's some exceptions that we need to make, why are those um being made? And then we can discuss those. It's my overall comments.
Council President Hunt, do you want me to get up to the first slide of um? We had that on those, but do we want to go through each of these topics? What, what was decided on that?
Um, that was the part where I dropped off. I heard the suggestion, did, what did council think about going through these versus giving general comments? I'm seeing Councilmember Walsh shaking her head, no, we don't want to go through these specifically. Um, I, let me see, I can't quite see, I can't see everyone. Um, if you, if you have a strong opinion, please note it, council members. Uh, okay, I see some thumbs down. So yeah, I don't think we want to um go through them specifically. Uh, I, I did touch on a couple of them, I think, um, but yeah, I think, I think we don't need to go through them each one. Councilmember Goodman?
Um, I think um Deputy City Administrator Snyder has a comment she wants to make before me.
Yes, uh she does. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Um, the, the reason why we're asking for some feedback on these approaches tonight was in the hopes that we could get the guidance we needed so that we could start to write code and have some more of these conversations with the community um and start making real progress. I think we've been um trying to hammer down our process, um and I think we've made a lot of progress on that tonight. Thank you for that. Um, but we really need to start writing the code. And we want to make sure that this approach of using best available science, this approach of uh making sure that development um improves upon ecological conditions, um that we're, that we're really approaching it from the right way as we begin to write code. And so if there's any other comments to that level, um we'll be happy to take them tonight. If uh, if council wishes, this is my question to council. Um, given some of the confusion over the materials, would you prefer that we come back to council in a study session format? Talk about approach again before we start writing code? Um, what's, what's the council's desire?
Um, I'll go to Councilmember Goodman, and then if anyone else would like to comment on this, just go ahead.
Uh, thanks. Councilmember Goodman here. Um, uh, it's getting late. Um, so um, in response to Andrea's sort of question there, um, and I just completely lost my train of thought. Um, so you're gonna have to come back to me because I literally, it just went out of my brain. So I'll put another comment thing in here. Thanks.
Okay, no problem. Um, Councilmember Hall?
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Um, so I've kind of just been listening to all of the comments that have been said. And I think um Deputy City Administrator Sni- Snyder is kind of centering, centering us again back at this conversation up here instead of down here. So, and if I'm hearing comments wrong from other council members, feel free to, to let me know. But what I'm hearing is overall um support of the approach. But then I'm hearing other council members also get deeper in to what goes next, what comes next after the approach. Um, so if that is an unfair summary of whatever so far, that's what I think, especially when I'm reviewing the goals and outcomes chart with the first step, which is determining the approach. It seems to line up. And then it does seem like a lot of the conversation that's come after that has been, um, what comes after approach? And how do we fine tune the code to both? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Deputy President Ray.
Can I yield to uh Councilmember Goodman since she seems to be back, back in the swing?
Yes, you can yield. Um, Councilmember Goodman.
Um, Councilmember Goodman here, seems to be is the operative phrase there. Um, so you know, um, I understand, I guess, the, the approach of coming to us and asking us if you're on the right track, I think is what you're asking us before you um start drafting things. Um, uh, we have so many plans that we've worked on um over the years. We have so much feedback from the public. We have the goals and outcomes. Um, I, I don't agree that the strategic plan um, that the code should, should um flow from the strategic plan. Um, I think the strategic plan is something that, you know, we sort of pick the things, the topics that we want to work on and have specific things that we want to accomplish. Um, but those, those, those things in the strategic plan typically come from plans that we already have. But what we have is a Title 18 that is, that is not up to date with our, um, you know, our comp plan and our central ISQ plan and all those other plans that are out there. Um, even though, as was mentioned during public comment, those may not be perfectly up to date either. Um, we have plenty of plans. We have plenty of feedback. Um, city staff, city administration um is well aware of how our community feels about our natural environment and protecting things. Um, and I think you have ample information along with the goals and outcomes chart um to start moving forward and taking the next step towards drafting. Some of the things that were in the, some of the topics that are in the specific, what is, what is it called here? Proposed code update approach on natural environment and topics. Um, not, I, I don't think there's enough information in here for me to provide you any meaningful feedback. Um, just things like, you know, the different classes and the streams aren't defined. Um, and I, you know, that's just an example. There's a chart on the very first page. I have no idea how to read it. So um, I think you have plenty of information to move forward. Um, I don't think there's any gigantic mystery here about what direction our community wants to go in. Um, it doesn't mean that I necessarily agree with all of it, um, but that's not my role here tonight. My role um later on, or the council's role later on, will be to go through the draft code and boards and commissions, to go through the draft codes, then to see if we have the details right. But I think in terms of generally mid or high level direction and policies, um, if we don't know which direction we're headed now, we're in trouble. Um, so I don't think I need to be preventing, presenting you with any detailed feedback on um, on this, on this approach. Um, it, I, it's, it's very detailed. I'm sure it's very thoughtful. I don't understand all of it and probably different from most of my council members. You know, I do work with code every day and I do land use work. And um, and I do sit on that ad hoc committee. And it was very frustrating. I agree with my fellow council members. Um, from the very first page, it was C attachment A. Well, I don't know where attachment A is, and I never found an attachment A or an attachment B or an attachment C. And I even have, I even have blue stickies here. So um, that was frustrating. Um, I've been kind of complaining about it for years about how the packets come out and how they're not well organized. There isn't anybody in the public that I know about who can, who could have moved through this tonight with any ease. It's not possible. Um, so I would suggest, um, I have two things that I would like. One is, I would like the folks who prepared it to go through it like we would go through it and see what you thought. And maybe you can make some improvements there. Um, and then the second thing I have is kind of off the topic, but um it probably will be my last comment. And it doesn't fit into anything um very well, so I'll just mention it here. In the um, in the pages that have the affinity group, it describes the affinity group as organized stakeholder groups with a vested interest in the code. Um, I would suggest that we change that vested interest in the code language. Vested interest typically has um a very particular definition and meaning. It means that people, um, if you look at the technical definition, it means that somebody has a financial interest. I think what we're trying, I don't know what we're trying to say, but everybody who lives here and everybody who works here has an interest. I think the affinity group is probably some other def, some other description. These are people who have been, you know, commonly very involved um in our community in some of these topics. And so um, and well-respected folks and all of that. But I don't think describing them as groups with a vested interest is the, is the right description because all of us have an interest, um, whether it's vested or not. Uh, I don't think we should be using that word, but that's, but um I think we should change that um because it makes it sound like these people have a more important interest in this code than everybody else who lives here and works here. And I don't think that that's true. Um, not taking away from anybody here, but I think it kind of takes away from everybody else. Um, so anyway, I think you have enough to move on. Um, I think you guys have done a lot of really good detailed work. Um, it's very thoughtful, um, but I don't have any comments about the approach other than it's very detailed. So thanks.
Thank you. Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Um, I have a couple of generic comments and they are, this is hard and that's why it's been on the back burner for so long and why it was such a great joy when we decided to pull it to the front burner. So having an expectation that we were going to breeze right through it probably wasn't a really good uh expectation. It's still going to be hard and we're still going to slog through this thing. So, you know, kudos for everybody that, you know, has worked so hard to bring it forward. Um, and then is the ad hoc Title 18 um still meeting, still active, still, still there? Because I think that's, that's um, from my perspective, a body that would be useful as we start to move forward to start to vet and bounce ideas off of is to take advantage of the ad hoc committee that we did form to provide um kind of real-time guidance as you move through um some of these discussions. Um, because again, going back to point one, it's really hard and it's going to retake some refinement. So thank you for all that you've done. Um, we still have a long ways to go and I think it's great that the ad hoc is still meeting and that they can provide guidance to the team as we move forward.
Thank you. Looking at the chat and if anybody has any additional comments. Um, I am not seeing any. I will make round two comments if there's nobody else. Um, so uh, I wanted to make a few other comments when this comes back. I, I do intend to look at it through this lens of, does it allow flexibility only when it will demonstrably provide equal or superior protection of critical areas? I think that's a good, I think that's a good higher level issue that we have with our current code, um, that we allow flexibility that, that damages our environment. So um, I think we should aim to strengthen the code. I, in terms of environmental protections, that's something that the envi, that the uh community has clamored for. We received a bunch of emails about it again and it's, it's been um stated and restated, I think. Uh, I, I think the question, so we had a conversation earlier about like the level of questions. The question, you know, that was presented to council about, should we use best available science? Of course, I think that's even one of our goals, but um, you know, then there's the devils in the details because there's different ways of applying best available science. And so that's where we'll really, you know, then again, have to apply that lens of, are we strengthening our environmental protections? Are we only allowing flexibility where it actually leads to ecological gain? What do we mean? We have to understand that. So I think, I think generally going for ecological gain is important. I think strengthening our environmental protections are important, using best available science, all important. Um, I think we also have a body of comments that support all of those. So I agree with my fellow council members who have said, yes, I think you can um go forward with those. But then, then we'll be looking at how does it actually line up with those because there's different interpretations of that. Um, all right, looking at the chat, if anybody has any additional comments. I do not see anyone. Um, so I'll check in with Director Dollywall and potentially others on the call if you have what you need um to go forward from council.
Sure. Thank you, council members. Appreciate all your time, your diligence, reading through complicated matters and apparently not very, you know. Um, so my, my key takeaways i, are the way we present the information from you. You needed more, uh, instead of attachments, you sort of uh want it all culled together with more graphics and, and more de, you know. I think where we struggled with was we gave a lot of information to Planning and Policy Commission. We wanted your level to stay at a little bit higher level at this point because we don't have all the details worked out. But then finding that balance between the detailed work and staying at a high level policy kind of creates some confusion. So I think moving forward, the next steps for us are, we're going to start uh getting the consultant, the technical consultant teams working on the natural environment topics code. We are committed to releasing the draft at least one month prior to the public hearing and scheduling some um times with the staff for anyone to hop in on a, on a meeting call where they, you can click and, and join a, join a meeting to get your questions answered with the hope that the two-hour public hearing on the topic will go smoother. So um, I think that's our, our next steps is to work on the code and then do the gaps analysis for the rest of the piece. So I think we have the information. Katie, do you, do you need to add anything at this point?
I don't know anything to add. Thank you. And thank you all for your thoughtful comments on all these topics.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you, everyone. So I think that ends the last um business item of this evening. We do have a good of the order, so at this time, um, I do expect that Councilmember D. Michelle will have one um, one topic for good of the order. So, uh, and then if additional council members have comments for good of the order, please indicate in the chat.
Um, uh, yes, um, uh, Stephen Padua at just about four o'clock this afternoon sent all of you the legislative priorities from 2022 legislative priorities from the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And we'd really like council to take a look at that. And if you've got comments, send those back to Stephen by Friday and uh then we'll get those to the Eastside Transportation Partnership for their uh next meeting. So thank you for any input that you could provide. Thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I had another quick um good of the order update I wanted to give. But if um Councilmember D. Michelle is looking for feedback on legislative priorities, I'll wait. Or Councilmember D. Michelle, were you wanting us to email those?
Yes, you can just email those to Stephen. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well then, if it's okay with you, Council President, I'll move ahead. I just want to, it's been suggested to me um that I give you all a quick update on a project I'm working on. Um, I'm working with the ISQ Youth Advisory Board to hopefully next month host a kind of a youth town hall um for youth to come and present their priorities uh to a council member um on anything that has to do with city policy. Um, and my goal is then to collect that information and present it back to you all at a, a regular city council meeting during the committee updates. So just an FYI, and one thing the advisory board and I have been talking about is, how can we potentially make this an annual thing that happens one or two months before the budget is presented? So that way this information can be presented to the rest of the council ahead of budget season. So just an FYI on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I saw some applause on that one. Um, anyone have anything else? Not see anything. Um, I do have one quick one, which is that uh we currently have, um, Councilmember D. Michelle currently serves on the Eastside Transportation Partnership, but we do have two elected official representatives with voting rights. And so um if you would be interested in serving on this, if you could please let me know, um, then we can hopefully see if we have somebody to fill that um seat to serve on that Eastside Transportation Partnership with Councilmember D. Michelle. So you can just let me know by email that you're, when convenient. Okay, um, anything else for good of the order? I do not see anything. Thank you all for your comments this evening. I think with that, we will adjourn, there being no further business, at 10:09 PM.